We ready? All right. Good evening, everyone. Happy Tuesday, November 16th. I would like to call this meeting to order of the Cohasset Select Board with a roll call vote.
Jack Creighton here.
Corey Evans here.
Jean Haley Dipple here.
Carrie Thompson here. All are invited to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance if they wish to participate. Do we, there we have the flag, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We are meeting in person, but just a reminder that this meeting is also being livestreamed on Facebook and our Zoom platform. And anyone who wishes to participate can come here in person. And we're excited for a productive meeting. So I would like to open the floor up at first for public comment. I don't know if we have anyone here for public comment. It doesn't look like it. We have someone for what? Oh, okay. Sure. Let's see. We're still getting used to this hybrid in-person slash virtual format. So I'm gonna make the exception this one time for someone raising their hand virtually, but in the future. Is Tim not raising his hand for public comment?
I am raising my hand.
Yes, hi, Tim. Hi.
Okay. Thank you. You were gonna make an exception in this case.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be very brief. And I'm speaking this evening as a citizen and resident of Cohasset and not as a member of any board
Okay.
or working group that I may be part of. You've all heard that Massachusetts expects to receive $900 million from the infrastructure bill recently passed by Congress. A significant part of that $900 million will become available to the cities and towns throughout a, through a grant process. The game of grants is a competitive sport. And the town that fields the best grant writing team will win. Cohasset has a terrific cadre of employees who write grants. However, it is not their primary job and they do it on an ad hoc basis. I recommend that the town hire a full-time grant writer with the appropriate background and expertise that will field a highly competitive team. I believe that such a person will more than pay for themselves and go a long way to providing the funding necessary to them, for the many, many critical projects facing us. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. We appreciate your input and the overall issue of communication, especially in relation to future funding is gonna be something we're gonna be talking about, especially in the next couple of months. So your comments are noted and we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to an update about our fire chief search progress process. And I believe we have a presentation by Community Paradigm Associates. I'm gonna turn it over first to Miriam and Chris and then we can move on to our presentation.
Thank you, Carrie. So tonight we have with us Bernie Lynch and Jack Carroll, retired fire chief working. Bernie, after a fairly, fairly sense of reach out and review, we came to the conclusion that Community Paradigm was gonna fit our needs the best. And there you have Jack and Bernie up on the screen. They're actually doing a police chief search in Walpole, which is why we moved them up a little earlier tonight.
Okay.
So they're a busy group. They've already, they're already hard at work. Jack's already been working with Chief Sylvia quite extensively to talk about the job and the department and all of that. And, and anything that you wanna?
We did provide them with what we received from the Select Board.
Okay.
As well as other information of their requests.
Okay. All right, Jack and Bernie, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for having us here tonight and thank you for the opportunity to, to work with Cohasset on this important search and hire. And just one correction to, to Chris. We are doing a police search in Walpole, but actually from here up, we go to Wayland where we're doing a police search there as well.
All right.
We are, we are busy, so.
It's a W-town, it's okay, we were close.
Exactly. Tonight's our C and it's brought to us by the letter C and W, so. But, you know, we're, I have a, a brief overview of the process that I can put up on the screen in a moment. But just to give, just to give the board and the citizens of Cohasset an opportunity to know who we are. You know, I have about 40 years' experience in municipal government, 30 years as a manager and another 10 primarily doing consulting work. And over the last six or seven years, Community Paradigm has been in existence. We have provided services to almost 100 communities in Massachusetts, primarily in the area of executive recruiting, but also some public management studies and work of that nature. So, you know, we think we have a good handle on the marketplace out there for employees and what the needs are for communities. As I say, I was a municipal manager in Chumsford and the city of Lowell. Jack was a fire chief in Chumsford, as well as fire chief in East Bridgewater and began his career in North Reddick. But he too has been out of the fire chief business directly over the last several years where he's provided interim services, recruiting services, and again, fire department assessment services to, to municipalities across the Commonwealth. In addition, Jack is the former president of the International Association of Fire Chiefs. So, Jack, has I missed anything that you wanna, you wanna mention?
No, I think you covered it, Bernie, thank you.
Very good. Let me just, is, is Chris and Miriam said, we've been at this now for about a week, but Jack has spent a considerable amount of time speaking with the chief. We have spoken to the staff as well as received your input. And we think we're, we think we're ready to go. We have a profile all developed and ready to go out on the street. But let me, let me just, if I could, just share my screen. I assume I can do that.
You should be able to. There we go.
There we go. So this is a basic timeline. I don't know if people can see this up on the screen there. Tonight, of course, is the 15th, meeting with the Select Board to review the process and walk you through exactly what this looks like. Again, over the last couple of weeks, we've been gathering information and we've developed that position profile and recruitment brochure. And, you know, I think based upon the feedback we've received so far from the town, you know, I think we're ready to advertise probably in the next day or two.
Mr. Lynch, I hate to interrupt, but you might make your window a little bit wider. We're on a widescreen and because you got a portrait view, it's very, quite small.
Zoom in a little.
Or just make the window wider, it'll be okay too.
Yeah, all right. Let's see. And no, that's, that's fine. Let's see if I can do this. How's that? Is that better?
If you could, if you could make it a little bit bigger, that'd be also good for viewers that are on Facebook.
Sorry about that.
A little better, you're getting closer.
Getting there, all right. Keep on, how's that?
Better.
That's better, yes, thank you.
There we go.
That's about as wide as I think as I can get it. And actually, it makes it easier for me to read here, so that's good. So we generally, when we put a position out there, we generally recommend a four-week time span to do the postings, the advertising, and the active recruitment, where we will reach out to potential candidates that we are aware of, out in the communities, across the Commonwealth and into other states to identify those that might be interested in the position and might be appropriate for the town of Cohasset. So we expect that that will take place. If we advertise this week, we will be back to the town with the resumes in hand and able to meet with the town manager with Chris in the middle of December. Obviously, December isn't the easiest time to schedule things like this. But we do anticipate that we will be able to identify the semifinalists at that time with, with Chris and go through a screening process with a, a group that, that he can determine or he will determine that will evaluate these candidates and identify those that, that should move on to a later stage, more as finalists or close to finalists. Jack will take over, will be involved in all that process, but then will take over completely after we identify those people and conduct an assessment center. And Jack can walk you through what that assessment center looks like. But you probably have had some experience in police and fire chief or police and fire staffing that you've used assessment centers in the past, but I'll let Jack elaborate on that. Jack, actually, why don't you do that now? If you could.
Okay, very good. So the, the assessment center will run, will be a one-day assessment center. And we'll, we'll meet with the town, meet with the fire chief and whoever Chris wants us to meet with to gather information so we can develop the proper exercises to find the chief that Cohasset is looking for. And typically, we do four to five different exercises. And typically, the exercises are the same. They're in basket or out basket. We do role-playing, group exercises where we would get all, whatever we, we decide for our candidates, whether we have four or five candidates to sit down and, and solve an issue. And what that, that allows us to do is really compare one candidate against the other as they're, they're sitting together. A written exercise to solve an administrative problem. Oral presentation. We could do an emergency incident simulation, but typically at the chief's level, we, we don't always do that. And then some type of an interview process. But we would pick four, four or five of those, depending on which ones the town determines that they want, and then develop the exercise specifically for Cohasset. So even though the exercises from assessment center to assessment center are very similar, what's in those exercises is, would be unique to Cohasset and the type of fire chief that you're looking for.
So, so, and then based upon the assessment center, there will be a panel that the, Jack will assemble of fire chiefs and perhaps other public safety officials or municipal managers that will evaluate the performance of each one of those finalists candidates and score them accordingly. And then based upon that, we will provide that information to the town manager who will determine which or all that will be interviewed by him on a one-on-one basis. We will conduct necessary reference and background checks of the, those identified candidates and allow the manager to make that selection that he will then, as I understand the Cohasset Charter, will bring to the Select Board for your approval. So we anticipate this to be about a 14-week process. We're already one week in. So we're looking at having a selection by the first full week of February. So happy, happy to take any questions or comments that board members or Chris and Miriam wanted.
Thank you. That was really helpful to have the timeline laid out for us. Members of the board, any comments or questions? Corey?
Thank you for the presentation, Jack and Bernards. I noticed in the, one of the, in your DFP response, there was a little bit of discussion about how applicants should be treated somewhat confidentially, confidentially. Because of, obviously, if they're applying for another job, there, there may be some impact on their current job. So could you expand a little more about the importance of that? And at what point, you know, is this, it does become public? So, you know, at what point is, is a, help us explain more kind of the sensitivity here and how we can properly go about this and be involved in the process.
Well, it is, it is a very important that confidentiality be maintained because as you've pointed out, if they're currently employed, they may not want their current employer, just as all of us that have been in that situation of looking for other, another position. We may not want our current employer to know exactly what, you know, what we're doing at that particular time. And so generally, I think in, in the, in the form of government that you have and the, under your charter, the only public name is, would be the selection by the town manager that will be brought to the board. Other than that, there would be no public disclosure of the, the candidates.
And do you find that that ensuring confidentiality like improves the quality of candidates? Do you find people are worried about not applying if they feel like they may be, I mean, exposed?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I mean, we're going through that right now in the number of the searches that we're involved with. The police chief positions that I've described in Wayland to Walpole. We're doing a number of manager searches right now across the Commonwealth. And that's an immediate question that, in fact, I, I think I had to spend close to an hour last week talking someone down with a concern that their name would go public. And they, they really didn't want their community to know that they were out looking because they, they felt very much valued by that community and they enjoyed working for that community. But this was a career opportunity that they, they felt compelled to look at. I think Cohasset would fall into that category as well. That candidates, very good candidates that are very much appreciated by their current community and enjoy working for those, their current community, maybe looking at Cohasset as being a, as an opportunity that is, you know, a once-in-a-lifetime or once-in-your-career chance to come and work, you know, for a premier community here in Massachusetts, particularly in the southeastern part of the state. So it's very important to get good candidates that they have that confidentiality throughout the process.
No, I agree. And it's also for possible internal candidates as well, right? That might be competing against each other, that are applying and they don't want other people in town to know. I think it's for, it's for everyone and I appreciate you addressing that because it is really important.
Yep.
Jean and Jack, what are you thinking?
Well, thank you. Thank both of you. You're both very, very well-regarded in your professions. I've kind of been following a little bit. So I thank you for agreeing to serve Cohasset. Cohasset's a very unique town. We think it's very special. So thank you in advance for spending a lot of time to make sure we get a very good furniture.
Thank you.
Jean?
Well, I wanna echo what Jack said. Thank you both for your time, but also I did have a quick question about the assessment center. It strikes me that this is almost like a structured interview, but exercise process. And I'm wondering, is there a template that you follow and then, you know, a scoring process that whoever is rating follows that is akin to a structured interview process? I, I confess, I haven't been through a set of assessment centers, so I'm curious how it works as a part of that.
Well, I think it's much greater than a structured interview. For, for example, if, if we have a written problem exercise. So say, we talked to the town, town manager and he says, you know, this is one of the issues that Cohasset could be facing at the fire department. So we'll put that problem together and then have the candidate sitting down at a, at a laptop doing that, that project while we're pulling them out and doing, doing other exercises. But when we look at that project at the end, we evaluate that, the, the written exercises probably evaluated against 20 different points that the assessors use to, to get a final score. And then, you know, we, we do other exercises like a, a community exercise. So we would have the, the fire chief assume the position of fire chief in Cohasset. And then we would have different community groups pose him with different questions. And it's the same process. The assessors use different grading sheets that have anywhere from 10 to 20 different points that they, that they grade or score that candidate on. And it's all consensus scoring and, you know, the, the assessors have to agree on, on what the final score is for each item. So then it's itemized down. So we don't look at a candidate and say, wow, that's about an 85. It, it's, it's a pretty structured set of data points that we use to come up with a final score for the candidate. And again, we keep, we keep the candidates confidential, even amongst the assessors. If we have five candidates, they're known from candidate one to candidate five. And we, we try to keep it as, as sterile as that.
Okay.
Okay, that's helpful because, you know, to the extent we have internal candidates, I think having some structure in the one through five will be helpful.
All right. Any other questions? I think you have laid out a very clear process. Is there anything else you need from us or questions you have for the Select Board? Or do you both feel ready to move ahead, forge ahead?
I, I think we're, we're ready to move ahead.
Okay.
I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable to move and, and hopefully get some great candidates for you to look at, for the, for the town to look at. And then get someone to the board, as I say, in early February.
Yeah, this is exciting. We're very much looking forward to seeing the candidates we get. Miriam and Chris, do you have any more comments?
I don't.
Okay.
I, this is, again, we look, there's some really good firms and I think we're fortunate. I think they offer a great combination of just general, plugged into Massachusetts and again, some very specific fire knowledge, which is really helpful because there's, you know, you work, I've worked closely with Chief Sylvia since my little, before I started. It was my, my first beginning of the year, I guess, right? That said, there's nuances in fire, then unless you're a firefighter or, you're not gonna know. And I think it's really important to have that, that expertise. That said, in the, what a fire chief is, you're running a, you're running a very important line.
Yeah.
That provides public safety services, medical, you know, medical services, emergency services. So there's other skill sets too. You really wanna see how, how does someone command, what kind of presence they have? Can they work on the fly? And those are all kinds of things that'll help us. And again, also, we'll, we'll shake the trees and say, hey, it's a really good opportunity here. You really should get a stint of it.
Right. No, it seems like you both really have a good understanding of what makes a good fire chief and Cohasset as a community. And Jack, I gotta give you a special shout-out for your, your fire badges behind you. That, that adds extra credibility with your background.
Well, thank you. I'm, I'm very proud of those. Took me 40 years in the fire service.
I can tell, I can tell. All right, guys, I know you gotta move on to your other search at 7:00. So thank you so much for squeezing us in tonight.
Well, thank you for taking us.
Thank you.
All right, take care. Bye-bye.
We appreciate it. All right, that's exciting. We're moving ahead. Again, it's big shoes to fill with Chief Sylvia, but I think we're in good shape moving ahead. So fingers crossed, we have some great candidates. All right. Moving on to licenses and permits. We got word from Jen Orem this morning that we have to continue the hearing for this liquor license transfer again. There still is a piece of paperwork that has not been turned in. So I do believe we opened that hearing last meeting and we're just gonna keep it open and not do anything until the 30th.
Yeah, just, just continue it until November 30th.
Okay. Do we need to take a vote on that or can we?
You should formally move to continue the hearing at the request of the applicant until November 30th.
I move that at the request of the applicant, we move this, we keep this hearing open until November 30th.
30th. Do we have a second? All right, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, we are moving that hearing until the 30th. The next event, very exciting, our Chamber of Commerce's Holiday Stroll scheduled for December 11th. It's really fun to have events to keep approving. This is great. There should be information in the packet. I know we've done this before. And then they also, I believe, need a one-day entertainment license for those who saw in the packet. So does the board have any questions or concerns about this event or this application?
I think it's a wonderful thing. It's nice to have it back. We have such a beautiful historic village and it's so perfect for a Christmas stroll, so.
And a great way to support our small businesses in town and, you know, holiday shopping around the small businesses. I know they all really appreciate it and it's great, so.
Bring friends, bring money.
Exactly. All right. On that note, we can entertain a motion to approve it.
I move that we approve the Holiday Stroll for December 11th, 2021.
Second.
Okay.
Should we say 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.?
I was about to say.
5:00 to 8:00 p.m. In Corey's backyard.
Okay. We have a motion and a second and the time specified. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Can that motion count as our one-day entertainment license? It'll be a separate motion, okay? I'm trying to, seeing if we can combine motions, but.
You're running ahead, you've got plenty of time.
Chris, we gotta keep doing that. We got some big chunks of the agenda that are gonna put us behind. All right, we need another motion for the one-day entertainment license that, again, should be in the packet if you need to look at it again.
Corey, you're the host.
I'm looking for the entertainment license, so I didn't publish it.
I looked at it earlier. It seemed fine and appropriate and like the usual.
Was this, was it in the event?
It's in, it was in some, in there somewhere.
I have, I have the event permit. I do not have the entertainment license.
Was it in an email attachment?
Yeah, I have Taste of Wine and Spirits and then I have Holiday Stroll. But in Holiday Stroll, we have event permit. You do not have insurance. We do not have the entertainment license.
Hold on, we're trying to find this. Justine, do you see it in email anywhere? I could've sworn it was in our email. I mean, worst-case scenario, we still have a meeting on the 30th?
I mean, Justine have it, we could have it, we could have it put it up on the thing.
Yeah.
That'd be sufficient for me.
All right, thanks for checking emails. Okay.
What's the difference between an event and an entertainment license?
Entertainment license allows for live music outside. And they're gonna be having singers like wander the premises. It's not terribly controversial, it's just.
No, it's not. Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be.
2:00 and 30.
All right, let's, to make things safe, we can add that to the agenda for the 30th. But the event has been approved. We just gotta approve the music. All right. Moving on to our goals update for the Select Board. We have a couple goal updates. The first one is communication and the second one is capital planning, both of which are very important. And I know we could go on for hours about both of these topics, but hopefully this'll jumpstart a conversation about them. And I do wanna say to the board, it, it might be worth then considering doing separate meetings of just individually about both these topics. I know especially the communication one, we're having a lot of decisions we might have to make soon. So just let's put that out there as a possibility as well. All right.
That's actually gonna be a recommendation, by the way.
Great.
Is to have both a brainstorming session with all of you. And it's like, it's a part, perhaps after the holidays or as time allows. And then a separate, bigger, kind of another meeting, kind of along the, there's Larry, so.
Kind of, let me get my mask. We just approved your event.
Yeah, sidebar, hold on. Can I just speak to our Chamber of Commerce real quick? Tyler. So we did just approve the overall event, but we could not find the one-day entertainment license in our email. Do you, if, if there's a special copy of that that you can get, we can still approve it in this meeting.
That I can get right now?
Or if there's, if it's electronic somewhere, we just couldn't.
No, I thought Jen had it.
Did you email it to Jen?
Sorry.
Sure I did, yeah.
Do you have your, can you just forward to Justine if you have it on your phone?
No.
Okay, sorry.
It's our, all right.
That's fine.
Well.
I can mail it tomorrow morning.
No, 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 it's totally fine, Larry. We did just, we did just approve the overall event, though. Is there anything you would like to say about it to the community?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna run, save as last year, but 2019.
I know, the before times, yes.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a different route for the gay ride, which will be good.
Okay.
Yeah. I've warned all the merchants and I'll do it literally one by one about how many people in each shop. Try to keep things outside, hopefully it doesn't breathe.
Okay, we're excited.
They're very conscientious of, of, you know, they don't, they don't wanna cause problems and have anything in their shop, so. All good.
Okay.
We know the rules.
Well, great. We just need to approve the, the entertainment portion on the 30th now.
Okay.
All right. Wonderful.
I just saw a text from Jen saying that the whole thing is a part of the application and that it needs, you need to vote to approve live music on stage. And then she creates the entertainment license for a signature leader.
So if we were to.
So it was never, it was never sent in the one draft.
So if we were to move to approve live entertainment for this?
On, on, on stage.
So we could do that right now? So move.
And then it would sign license after.
So move.
Thank you, Jen, wherever you are, for watching, okay? All right, let's, Jack, you're making the motion.
Yeah, I move that we approve live entertainment at the Village Stroll, on the Holiday Stroll on December 11th, 2021.
Okay. Second, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving this, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, both are approved, Larry. You don't have to come back on the 30th. All right, sorry, little sidebar there, but we got that done. Back to Chris and our communication and capital planning goals.
So having a, a meeting of all of us to talk more about best practices and some specific goals and objectives that would be very helpful on communication, and also on the, the big infrastructure goal, which I shall present more on. Having a meeting kind of analogous to the one that you had last week, except with a different cast of characters would be the Select Board, Capital Budget Committee, the Assembly Advisor Committee, talking about all of that and planning for that. So, so keep those in the back of your mind. I, you know, I don't know if you want to try to do something in December, that's great. If not, we can try for January.
All right.
I think it eases up a little bit in January, before town meeting heats up.
Right. Yeah, January might be better. I feel like December's, after town meeting, it's getting a little close to holiday stuff, but the board can weigh in about that.
And my thanks to Justine, who did a great job. She just looked very nice. And also to Megan James, we'll see a graphic for her in just a minute, which is very informative.
Oh, great.
This is, I think it's a joint check, but I'm not entirely sure.
That's her stuff.
And it certainly is. So, you know, the communication though is pretty broad. And there it is. So what we decided, what we've done to start is inventory, analyze, and do some assessments. So if you can go to the next one and kind of blow it up. As big as you can go. Just center. So what Megan was able to do is pull out, one more size up. And then scroll down. So what we've done is we've kind of got, we've reached out to departments that do a lot of committee. Say, what do you do? And if you can scroll down a little bit. So for example, Elder Affairs has a Facebook account, 547 follow, you know. They have a Twitter account, they have a YouTube. Not so many people subscribing to that, but their big communication device is actually 1,500 mailings to go to in person. Right? And they also do a lot of emails.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's old school, but it works, right?
Yeah.
The town, we have a big town Facebook account. We have a YouTube page, which is actually used heavily for viewing views. That's what most of these were. 171,000 views of the website last year. We'll get into analytics in a minute. Our job postings got 14,000 views. That's pretty impressive. The, and again, we have a Instagram page too, but it's new. So it's not, there's very little, there's not a lot of data yet. Library, library does everything, right? There, you can see that they have over 1,200 followers on Facebook. They have 1,000 followers on Twitter, 1,000 followers on Instagram. Megan thinks a lot of them are the same. People really like the library. They look at all the platforms. They have a YouTube channel as well. Their website got over 36,000 hits. They have almost 4,000 email subscribers. And they do quarterly mailings of their program. So they cover literally the entire spectrum. Recreation is a little more online, though they do quarterly management as well. You can see they have almost 2,000 Facebook followers. Over 1,300 on their Instagram account. They have a very visual program, right? Pictures of the kids, programs and stuff. Which also interesting is their YouTube channel is over 5,000 subscribers because they did so much online this year.
Yeah.
You don't think of rec being, being that, like, they did so many programs this year. Police run, you know, ranks all of us, because they've been doing this, they've been in the game a long time.
Yeah.
They have over 6,000. There's actually more followers than probably people in Cohasset who have Facebook accounts. The, over 7,000 followers on Twitter. Instagram is not as big. And they also have a big subscriber base for the email. The email really is our first line of employment. And Safe Harbor is another example, right? They're very social media friendly. You can see that they have a very large, 1,200 subscribers on Facebook, Twitter. They have a lot of Instagram. Instagram is very popular. They have a lot of email contacts, and they've had over 18,000 direct hits as well over the last four years. So what does this say? So what it says is that we have a lot of people to jam through. So let's take a little bit, so we got a little bit of the analytics, we'll just throw it for a second here. Some of it's a little, little hard to see. As you can see, there's actually some interesting data that comes out of this, so long as you self-identify. It appears that women, more than men, are reaching out to us based on both on Facebook and this. I don't know if that's because women use it more, or in Cohasset, there's just more folks are engaging.
Interesting.
More moms and dads. So it's just, it's kind of interesting. Again, it's self-identifying, Jen, for Facebook purposes. And if you look at the next page, again, thank you to Justine for pulling this out. We have a pretty, you know, things bumping down, depending on the day, but it's, you know, there's folks who regularly come and get our information. You have the next page, most people, it's very, it's hard to jump in this, zoom in a little if you can. Cohasset is a place where most people come from. That makes a lot of sense, right? Then it's Situate, Kingham, Hall, basically all of our neighbors. Marshfield, Plymouth, there's no random towns, like, you know, there's not, it's not Plymouth, England, or Boise, Idaho. It's all local, so, and I'm guessing that a fair number of the people who are from our neighboring towns are probably accessing Rec or Senior Center. A lot of people, you know, seniors kind of make the market. They find the hottest program. They go to wherever the senior centers is, it's the coolest. The next page.
Chris, what was the, my apologies, what's the timeline for this? Because I'm also thinking that there's probably a significant number of hits from people at their workplace.
Oh, that's true.
I'm wondering if 2019, the Boston number is higher than it is now. Okay, so it's pandemic.
This is right. That's a very good point.
Curious.
Actually, it does go to show that it's a lot more people, a lot of people work in Boston. We have, our community very much came home for COVID. Were able to work from home in the kind of jobs that most people have here. I think that's partly reflected. YouTube had 661 views in the last 28 days. That means people are watching the videos, because what's up there is meetings. We have, by the way, it's a pretty, it's a pretty thick stock there, so there's a lot of stuff up there. The, the next couple of pages talk about the town website a little bit. So as you can imagine, the town, the most popular parts on the website are homepage, right? The Agenda Center coming in second. And on the line, Bill paying third, well, again, it's complete sense, right? Those are the things that people are going to hit most. And then different departments, the zoning board and assessors are up there. That just makes a lot of sense. There's information up there. Our newsflash, the Select Board makes the top 10, believe it or not.
Excellent, yeah.
And then bidding is in the top 10, too. By the top search light, we don't have the best search function. Permits, treasury, which is bill-paying, zoning, the cemetery, interesting. Where we do run an active cemetery business.
Yeah.
All right, the data Justine pulled out, two-thirds of our visitors are from desktop, and about a third from a smartphone, which is kind of interesting. You'd think that more people would be accessing from a smartphone, but the people are at home and they're at work, they're at their desktop.
And it's.
And our website is compatible on a smartphone. It does work. And then another bit of information is kind of interesting. Google will tell you how many people use them to get to you, which I didn't realize. This is something I'm learning, right? So the library, for example, 338,000 people, this is in the last year. This is also data from the last year. Looked up directions to the library from Google, 141 found the phone number from Google. And there were 877 clicks to the website from Google.
That's pretty much me.
And we can do that, we can actually do that for a lot of different things, any end-to-end. So it's very interesting. And the amount of data that's out there is pretty frank. So the, so what does that all say? Well, what it says, we have lots of communications, lots of towns, and lots of information. But what's missing, well, what's missing is coordination, honestly, right? We don't have a central point for all of these things. We don't have central support for all of this. And there's an assert consistency. There's some really great stuff out there. But it's the consistency, and it's not like everything has to look exactly the same. We're not, we're not a one brand operation at the same time. Because, you know, what you see on the library side is having different, you see Harbor, and different weddings. So what's, the thing that's come through, and I think we've talked about this, I think the meeting next week, kind of zoomed in on this, we need a staff member who lives this, not just someone who does that as part of their job. Obviously, for me, communication is part of my job all the time. Here in front of you, or I'm talking to a constituent, or I'm doing an update for Facebook, whatever it may be. That's, that's great, but it's only a part of, you know, living. I can't support the zoning, the zoning working groups, you know, visuals. And Justine does a lot of work on the website, but she also has a state char because it's part of her job. And Jen Orem does a lot of work on the website too, but again, she runs a very, helps manage a very busy office in performance inspections. So it really does seem that we need to have a full-time position. And it's not, it's not in the traditional spokesperson or P I, a public information officer. It's really what I would call a communications manager. Something that's much more akin to an offer profit or a small business. Somebody who really does content creation, platform oversight. Coordinate, again, for our purposes, coordination with staff and committees to make sure that the messaging is going out. Assistance with public meetings, community outreach for various things. And I think it's a whole possible thing. And the really, and I was on the phone with our PR firm today, our communications firm. They don't do this stuff, right? They don't make that. I've asked them for some best practice, such as some of their holiday, for some of the folks they serve. And I'm also looking out there. There just aren't a lot. I think we have to invent, this company goes out and finishes, we kind of have to invent a little bit on our own. And I think borrowing from the private sector in this case is probably the best answer, because I think that's really what we're looking for. And we're a small operation, really, at the end of the day. We don't have a big department, it's got to be one. That said, there's great resources in the departments. Megan James is a really great communicator. She just went through a digital marketing program. She's a very young and energized staff, who are very into social media and just electronic communication, and all kinds of communications. We have some staff in our own building who do some really great stuff. Bill Quigley has been doing, Chip Quigley has been doing stuff for years, right? And he's more from, you know, he has camera in his garden. I mean, it's a hobby piece, but he takes, we've seen his pictures. And he does great work making sure that people are prepared during emergencies and cutting from, cutting moments. So I think that's something that's important. And while I most certainly will build this into the budget for next year, I don't think it's, I don't think we're going to wait six months. So I'm working with the homeowners to find ways to purpose some of the rent money we have, some federal money we have, and some money we might be able to squeeze out of the budget to fund the position for the next six months. And again, I think it's important to be able to bring some of that, too. It's like, what are the goals? What are we really going to achieve in the next six months? We have the zoning, this community zoning project that we talked about last week, getting, helping with that, helping engage people on that, helping engage people even on town meeting. We're doing a little bit more of that. We've been doing more of that. We're actually planning for pre-town meeting TV show. But there's other ways of reaching out to people, getting people educated. And we need someone to do that. And also just to kind of, I think, tie our social media pages together. So that, so that we know what's going out there. There's good consistency. For example, just yesterday, there was a first clinic here in this room for COVID booster. We did our COVID booster clinic. We had 126 people according to Mary. Very good, great turnout. We're doing another one in two weeks. That can all be, this information on the website and social media. And we were able to get another 100 shots. And we want to actually get low, and it should, so we want to make sure that it's out there and people know those kinds of things happen. We can provide resources to go to other places, whether it be Walgreens, or contact your doctor, or, you know, here's the state website. We want to make sure that the kind of stuff sort of goes. So I'll stop for a second, say, does that make sense? Does that path of having someone who lives this, with that kind of, you know, embryonic judge, makes sense?
Yeah, and I absolutely think a staffer is necessary. And you're right, Chris, I think the private sector is, has these people working for them. But local town government and government in general is a little bit behind having these people. But they do exist, and it's critical, it's critical that we have someone do this. Because, like, so for example, like with the boost, the clinic yesterday, how did that get shared with the community?
We had a notice on the website, I believe there was stuff on Facebook. And I believe, and I know that there were some calls made directly to seniors.
Got it.
Because this was, this was open to anyone, but it was primarily here to seniors in town.
That's right. And I think we need to be aware of kind of the generational shift happening too, right? Like, clearly, there are certain populations that, you know, hard copy mailers and phone calls work really well, and we need to continue that. But there's also a whole new younger generation in town that wants more things on Instagram and would rather have other avenues and a better website that's more intuitive. So I think that we need to be aware of kind of the broad generational diversity we have in town right now and all the different things that every age group is desiring with communication. Okay, Cory?
Yeah, I think, might I suggest, I think that the pivot to the private sector is a good one, because, I mean, and just hang on with me here. What you're really looking for is like a junior V P of marketing, right? Because marketing's goal, obviously, we always think about marketing as selling a product. But what's the first thing you need to do before you sell a product is engage somebody. They need to be engaged with a brand. They need to be engaged with something. That means signing up for a newsletter or getting a coupon. There are all these ways to engage, and somebody with a marketing background will understand how to engage our residents on stuff. How to say, how do I get this to the people that need to see it? How do I get them to open it? How do I get them to understand it and digest it? That's really what we need. And everything from, you know, when you leverage social media to having email lists, targeted lists, you know, there's layers of communications, like this beautiful, you know, layer cake, whatever. And it just, and if we do it right, it can just be this fantastic thing. And I think somebody, you'll find a lot of people of the younger generations that have a marketing background and maybe want to get out of the crazy corporate sector where the deliverables are, how much did you sell? What did you do this? Where it's, this is more community-based, this is more care-based, not so much, you know, dollars-based. So you may have success if you just slightly tweak, you know, the top line of what you're looking for.
I think that's a important point, Cory, too. I think I, that, what brings people to the public sector work is a degree of fulfillment. I went to Lawson, and I have some friends, I remember a number of years back, a friend of mine who made a lot more money, telling you that he felt all he did was lose money from one corporation to another, because he was a bit of a big fan of Lawson. And in other words, people do a lot of other things. Now, I make a lot less money. And I was working for a counselor, doing some interesting stuff. That I think there's more of an ethos of this, and I don't want to generalize any generation, but job fulfillment is really important to people, the quality of the job. Not that money doesn't matter, people want to live their life. And I think, I think that people are rethinking, we're in an interesting era. People are kind of rethinking their skill sets and what they want to do. And I think it'll be interesting to see what you find, whether it's an early career or late career or career change. I mean, I think there's, class is full of great talent, too. So it'll be really interesting if anybody here has any thoughts, or it might be interesting.
And also just, and this is not just a classic problem, but the way that people are consuming information and what's available, right? So again, like certain generations, like we have, we don't have as many local news outlets, right? And that's a broader societal problem in terms of local news coverage. A lot of younger generations don't have, are not watching the local TV station, right? Like, they don't even have typical cable packages. So even figuring out the way that people are consuming information and how we address that, Cohasset does almost need some brand management. But also to even get, you know, our younger residents, our kids, following these pages, then they'll last forever as followers, right? And it's like getting people involved at all ages of being, you know, into observing what the town is doing. It's like you want to earn that, those citizens, and then keep them.
One of the nice things is that town is so compact, there are only 10 square miles. We've been able to roll out, I mean, those flashing billboards, right?
Yeah.
They, you put them at the R T F, you're going to see a third of the town is going to roll through there over a weekend.
Yeah.
And they're going to see a message, whether, whatever.
I learned all my stuff about that.
Dump communication is critical, yeah.
And even those little signboards.
Those work, yeah.
That was an Eagle project, and we tweaked it a lot, and we were able to, they're more functional. And we put those up too. I mean, there's not one way to do it, right? And even, you know, even getting mail, you know, it works too. So, you know, we're a small town, right? I mean, we don't have to go to one post office.
Right.
They can deliver, and the warrant's going to come at everybody's home in a couple of weeks. It gets delivered, there it is. And the library is very successful with that. Even Rec is too. They do some, they do mailings. And they're very, you know, as long as people aren't being deluged with them, and they know, and they know what to look for. as long as people aren't being delusional with them, and they know, and they know what to look for, it pops out, you know, they don't, you don't have to be shocked. So that's a, that's a method, and I want to put that on my refrigerator and see what the schedule is, and some people do that.
Yeah.
Well, I think we, something, when we address this, we should be thinking, long and hard, there's a couple of issues. One of the things that we've all been following is Facebook is now Meta. Is using data.
We can make jokes about that, yeah.
And, and data is a two-edged sword. Who controls it? What's it promoting? I mean, it's wonderful to say, hey, we want all these wonderful things, we want people to know that. And as people who know me know that I am a big, big believer in absolute transparency and that the citizens have the right to know everything that happens in government, because government belongs to the citizens. So I think that's a wonderful goal. However, I think some good thought needs to be taken on how data gets misused. Who decides what goes up? Who decides how it's phrased? Who decides what isn't allowed to go out? Are there good community organizations? Are there bad community organizations that we want to make sure don't get access to this? Who makes that decision? These are some thoughts that, you know, as us as select board, that we are responsible to the community, we need to be thinking through this. And on the fiscal side of the economics, I mean, just some basic things, Chris, what would this new staff member cost, including the cost of post-employment benefits and pensions? And then when you create a position, you always have to understand that that position goes on forever, and the person who has it, you support. So you end up actually supporting two positions over the term of that. And this is something, Chris, would be very helpful to know, because we do have to do this, because what we spend here takes away from something else. And when we talk about, and I'm glad we have capital budget here, Sam, because we are facing a problem in this town of allocations and priorities. So if we spend here, does it come out of New Ballfield? Does it come out of the serious work that needs to be done for, in our schools? So it's a wonderful idea, which I support, because it does promote transparency and accountability, but we should think about it in the overall context. Thank you.
Well, and I, in addition to this staffer, Jack, like there are some other big communication budget items that I think we need, right? So for example, I, I'm, I stick by that we need an entirely new website. I don't think our online pay system is easy to use, I think it's incredibly difficult.
No offense to whoever did it.
No, I know, so there are other big issues, like a website, a good website, what this town deserves is gonna cost a significant amount. Right? But once we have it, do you know what I mean? Hopefully it'll stay and it'll continue to get updated. But the overall communication goal, I guess is what I'm saying, is going to be a financial commitment, not just in terms of a staffer, but in terms of other resources that we might need. And I think that we all need to consider that, because we made communication one of our main goals, but it's not just the staffer, there's gonna be other budget items that we have to work through and make sure the town can afford.
If I could analogize for just a second, we have a building like this, right?
Right.
One of the most important things that we make an investment in maintenance and maintain. And, and effectively, I think the staffer here is, is that same thing. I mean, we have, it's great to have a platform, it's great to have a social media presence, and it's great to have mailings, but if you don't have somebody managing it and doing it right, then you're, you're wasting the investment. And at the same time, I think it is important to make a fiscal with why. At this point, I think, you know, we're in a world where we have to communicate, our residents expect it.
Yeah.
And again, when I'm telling you about, we're trying to communicate facts about what's going on, right?
Right.
You know, L Street is, you know, the project's going on, here's the map, here's, here are detours, or there's a great program at Rettis Week, or what about that movie that the library's hosting, or, you know, let's go Skippers, you know, they're playing in playoffs or something.
And we should mention that, go Skippers, that playoffs.
Exactly.
Carver, Friday night, go down there, the Mavs, sorry, I didn't mean to do that.
Are you going to the game, Jack?
It's better football than your lover seeing Foxborough. Good football team, and they're tough, they're small and tough, but anyway. Back to the conversation.
It's true, though, there's a lot of different types of information to share.
So Carrie, if I could just say, it strikes me that we probably need four things as we think about this goal. And to your point, maybe some of it's in the staffing needs, some of it's a website, external consultant and/or a new company that helps us with it. And so I think that first, we're looking at social media and website savvy. And that is a part of brand management and marketing, but I think that's a distinct skill set, or distinct skill sets, right? Like who designed your website is gonna be different than who manages social media, right? And then we have a related issue of event and project-based communications. So sort of like known issues like advertising our town elections or town meetings. And to Corey's point, like really getting them, figuring out the best ways to get that before people, right? Or the zoning bylaw working group, how to help that sort of time-limited group, where it's not gonna be recurring all the time, but it's pretty important, and we want to get the word out. And so how can we help support the group whose real job is to focus on the substance with someone who's gonna help foster sort of all the different channels, right? And then we have, I think, an issue too that we probably need to lock down better in terms of individualized communications from residents. You know, wanting to figure out information, and I think the website can address some of this if we have better places to like direct people, because we all get inquiries, right? All the time, and sometimes there's really easy answers, but you just have to work your way through the web. Again, if there's quicker, easier ways to just direct people, including public resources through the website, et cetera, I think that would be good. And then I think the last place we have to consider, which we haven't really talked about, but it's worth putting on the table, so I'm going to, emergency communications. I know Chief Quigley is really good at Facebook and all of that, but I also think that in an emergency, it's an emergency, right? And so we want our police and fire chiefs to be focused on their core work. And so I think we need to figure out how we can have someone also take on that role of disseminating information to the community, which we saw during the last storm, right? In terms of people really wanting more information on a regular cadence, more specific information where possible. Again, the chiefs are busy doing chiefing, right? I think that that's another expectation we would have of this additional communications goal that we're trying to sort of deal with. So it's a mix of different things and different tools, but I think it does make sense to lay it all out, because it's probably not just social media, right? It's like a whole bunch of different things working together.
Yeah.
I just wanted to throw that out.
Mike, just pick up some, well, I was just gonna, I was just gonna, I was just gonna off what you just said. I think you brought two, two interesting things, one I noticed during the analytics is that like, I would expect the top 10, you know, on my website, one of the top things people look for is a contact us page, right? And that's not there. So if somebody is looking to contact, and they're clicking around so much that they can't find it, they probably just get frustrated and go away. The other thing is, I think your point about chiefing is actually, and to your point, Jack, about how we distribute resources. I know, when, for my company, when I'm looking at hiring somebody, I don't just say, okay, what's my expense, when we're gonna get out of that? I also think about, what are they gonna take away from other employees that may be more expensive than they are? So what time am I freeing up so other people that aren't as proficient at that job can now do that? So, you know, it may not be worth, as you said, chief's time to spend a lot of time on social media. Obviously, the top level communication is very important, and that's not really what I'm talking about, but the regular updates, you know, we want them to be on, you know, on the ground, doing their things, and if we can offload that, that's a big value that we get back by properly structured resources.
That's a good point.
Totally.
Another way in offloading is outsourcing. If you get a private company who does this all the time, we can't afford to have them do this particular staff full-time, but they're doing it for several other half a dozen communities. They're really good, and they're very, very efficient, they're competitive, and if they're good, they'll be bidding for the business. So not only do we get a potential, a higher-quality product, we get it at a competitive price, and we don't get locked into, frequently in, in government, it's too easy to get locked into a method of doing things. And then the people doing it, you like them, you want to do it, nobody really wants to do anything. It's hard, there's a lethargy, lethargic element to government. Outsourcing removes that. You can be agile, you get things done, and frequently you can get it done at a very attractive price. And then your human capital, which is the decision-making, then your human capital and the government is doing what it's really good at. That's a good point.
Oh, we could debate outsourcing, because I completely disagree on that. And I, I think that we need a person that's in our community and knows personalities and is here.
I'm not saying that, that's the person who controls.
And I, I think that outsourcing can a lot of times be very impersonal and not necessarily understand the, the magic and special nature of our town and the, the ways in which I think we can get messages across, is we need someone here on the ground doing videos, doing posts. So I mean, we can, we can debate that at another point, but.
Well, I just would want to tweak, and Jack, if, if I don't get your meaning right, just correctly, but I think there are certain things that you can use, dedic, you can use outsourced for. So if we have someone inbound, you know, we can have outsourced.
For website design or something, yeah.
Right, I think the, the harmony comes from having, having, utilizing the right fit every time, it's a problem.
And the human capital is actually, to, to accept what Carrie has referred, when I'm talking about human capital, or that, that's our, our people here.
Yeah.
And we, we have that control, which is priceless. A lot of the mechanics are doing that. I don't want somebody who's really good at reaching out to my community, doing some of these tasks. I want them to do what I hire them to do, which is really good, relating to the community, to listening to the community. So you get more of that by taking what can be outsourced and do that efficiently, that's.
So can I make a suggestion for the working group meeting? I think that's a great idea, because there's just so many facets to this, including internal, external, you know, how to approach it. One thing that may be helpful is, we do have residents in town who are P R experts. They are marketing, you know, this is what they do for a living, and to the extent any of them would be interested in providing feedback or volunteering their time by, you know, suggestions about what we might want to think about, because, you know, if you look at a lot of other towns, Cohasset's not unique in terms of the things we grapple with. So we may be trying to, in part, invent something a little bit, and it may be useful before we go out and hire someone to get some of the in-town expertise we may have from, you know, folks, for example, who volunteered to do Cohasset 250, they did a great job with the marketing and reaching out to say, okay, if we were to supersize this for all of Cohasset, you know, what do you think on all different levels?
And I mean, we could consider doing some type of, it doesn't even need to be formal, but possible informal surveying of asking residents, you know, what would you like to see in a new website? What other communication would you like? What would be your preferred method of communication with our town? Like I think there are some cheap, more maybe informal surveys we could do to get thoughts and, and get citizen feedback on a lot of these things.
This is great. I, I do want to just go back to emergency communication for a second, because it's something that's very important based on what we've been through. So we actually have some really good existing vehicles, one of them is reverse line on one. There, there's direct calls, our staff is all part of the system, the problem is our residents. So we need to make an extra push to get people to sign up for that and say, put your cell number in there. We're not gonna call you randomly, we're not selling your phone number, because there's an emergency call, and you're, you're the best person to know what the best number is. I mean, landlines are rapidly dying.
It needs to be cell phone, yeah.
We need that, so we want to make sure everyone knows that's available, we'll make sure that we push for that, because we need to. Because it's, I mean, I, I had staff members coming, they have more communications from us than from our town. It's very small, which is great, but it wasn't helping because, no, at the end of the day, they couldn't, they didn't have enough workers.
Yeah.
Or they had to come to work.
Well, Chris, and just to interject, so that's a perfect example of, if you had someone who was a communications manager, you would have a script and talking points, and you would feed it out to all of those people, library, elder aged, police.
And they'd all have the same.
They'd all push out the same message, and we would too.
Exactly.
Now, there's another, another thing that came out of it that isn't, and it's a network, that we, the private network that supports communication. So there's things I think that we can do to fill those gaps, and one of them is Ron will be presenting. And we really need to maybe do some kind of a presentation in December, at the December meeting, because there'll be some requests in Ron and our C I R's budget to upgrade our network. And we have a fiber, the town, it's installed a fiber that's been incredibly useful, and it did not go down during the storm. So we, we can use that to leverage Wi-Fi and to pop that up in certain key areas in town. So if there is a problem, people can go there and then get off. This building doesn't have it, we have a generator on it, there's Wi-Fi, we can have Wi-Fi in the parking, we can have Wi-Fi at the schools and the parking lot, one of the town commons, there's a lot of places, and I can be there just regularly during the storm.
That'd be amazing.
And so that's something that Ron and I have been talking about, and I think it's something we can really do, we have planned for. We could also extend our fiber in the parts of the town where it's not there, so we can pop up Wi-Fi in other areas that might be underserved, you know, some posts that exist. On that same topic of underserved, I think, and I've been talking with Michelle, we're assessing the availability of town-owned land for citing, for proven cellular networks.
Yeah.
What kind of land, and that could be a tower, it could be just booster devices. We need to get out there and say, look, we have space available. And again, I think, you know, I know there's concerns about towers, like I said, with the technology that exists, if you don't have a transmitter, you don't have signal.
Right.
And there's parts of the town where there isn't any signal, so we, we want to see if we can jumpstart that conversation, get some people engaged. We're also working with the emergency communications, so we are in a four-town emergency communication center, to get a, an emergency call box out of Rocky Beach. That's an area that town is a dead zone. That beach is used a lot more now than it ever used to be, and we want to get a call box, and not just the beach, but also the beach. People find themselves unable to call, they can get through emergency, and they can get through the call box. So that'll be hard to line up for the system, so. And then again, that'll be a test to see how well that works. We might be, there's already one at Sandy Beach, so might we, might we be able to install some others? Yes, you'll have to see how it works. So we have, we already have the equipment, it's been sitting around, it's been bought for another purpose by the schools that we use. So we have it, and I'm sorry, it wasn't for schools, it was for the firehouse at one point, from a decade ago, and it was a different plan. Always had it, and it works, and if we can repurpose it and make it a safe, make that area a safer place. So there are pieces looming, we'll talk more about them, I think, in December. But thank you for bringing that up, this was a great conversation, and there's a lot more to go.
Yeah, and just real quick, kind of surveying the board's mood, do we, would we want to try to squeeze in this meeting for later after town meeting in December, but before Christmas, or do we want to wait till January? Or a just communication meeting?
I would say that probably January, but be realistic, this is gonna be a very, very compressed area. And I think that we should be looking, talk, talk to people around town. If you're looking today, you should be thinking about it, give any of us a call, your input is important. And maybe we can start the conversation, because what I've found, at least in Cohasset, is the quality of our citizens is such that when they start thinking about things, we have such a base of skills that if they start talking, we may find in January, they'll have figured it out for us, so we don't have to worry about it.
Okay, so that answers the question, we'll, we'll.
I'll throw out for consideration, the 11th, there's not a scheduled meeting that night, January, it's Tuesday.
In January?
In January. So there's a meeting on the 4th and the 18th, but there isn't one scheduled for January, which points to my calendar.
The only consideration that I would put out there is, if we wanted to get it started in December briefly, maybe on the limited issue of emergency management before the storms come.
I think that's a good idea.
To get just a little bit of progress maybe on that point, because in January.
Yeah.
No, I, I think that a very limited, nothing else but emergency, because emergency is basic to the community.
Do you want to do that as part of the, the meeting on the 14th?
December 14th?
Yeah, the meeting on December.
Yeah, an update on emergency communications, yeah, and the boosters and the Wi-Fi, yeah.
That's the last meeting.
But the 11th would also work.
Yeah, that could be for the bigger content, the bigger board. I'll, I'll double check it.
Okay. All right, any final thoughts on communication? We're ready for capital planning. All right, our special guests. Come join the table.
Sam, wanna come out, Sam?
I'm here if you want.
Oh, I think Sam will.
Come on over.
This is capital budget. We're putting you up on the firing line, I mean, we're honoring you this.
Join the party, Sam.
And I have to say that I've been to some of the capital budgets, and these guys are bet over and they're very impressive.
He's sucking up, he's saying.
I'm sucking up to him. I want him to teach me how to sail my sailboat.
That's valid, that's, that's a good reason. All right, hi, everyone.
So today we're going to talk about goal number three, which includes initiating discussions regarding major infrastructure in town. So we've been working with capital budget and oftentimes when department heads put in capital budget requests, it's for the components of the building, not necessarily the buildings themselves.
Right.
So, so we want to focus on, you know, what inventory we have in town. So we have a better understanding of what the future looks like at for a 20-year capital plan. So first part of the apple, I just put this together quickly so we have better understanding. We put things into buckets. So we have the town buildings, utilities, which will be water and sewer, transportation, roadways, information, information technology, harbor, parks and recreation. As we start to evaluate our town buildings, we look at the town hall that houses the administrative offices, but yet so much more. It, as much as the administrative work happens there, it's a central focus of the town. Often people come, come there just to, you know, form relationships with the employees. It's almost like a little community side.
It is.
Um, we have 98 Summer Street, which houses the American Legion, 38 Parker Ave, which is home of CSCR. We have 18 Lighthouse Lane, which is the light keeper's house, which is a function space as well as two apartments. Wilkirk Commons here, um, beautiful building. We have the library and recreation center with the teen center. We have the DPW, police and fire and schools. And on the right-hand side, you'll see some of the items that we're, we're checking off. So town hall, we've been looking into renovation, rebuild. We're recommend, we're recommending at annual town meeting 2023, um, to have that project voted on. As far as 98 Summer Street, 38 Parker Ave and 18 Lighthouse Lane, we had building needs assessments completed for all three properties. We're loading those into the capital plan as we speak. There is a 10, they provided us with a 10-year capital plan. Surprisingly, um, there's not as much needed as we would have thought. So you'll see that when capital budget planning season starts. We invested in a program asset essentials. And what that does is it accounts all the components of the building and it gives them a date, a life cycle. I didn't put it up there, but I, I pulled one out quickly today and it's just a re, a replacement list of the components of the building. So we have the ability to tag everything within the building and identify what the life cycle is, when it needs replacement or when it needs review. Roof assessments for all buildings has been completed. The salt shed for the DPW has been bid and awarded, that'll start in April. The public safety building study is pending. We do have a placeholder in the capital budget, um, plan to get that done. And the school's needs assessment is pending. The first step was hiring someone to help us initiate the needs assessment. We have that contract in hand. Now the next step would be going up to bid to find someone to complete the needs assessment for us. So when we look at utilities, we have the wastewater treatment plant and the Lily Pond Water Treatment Plant. Um, there's many components that go into each of these plans, plants. The membrane filters, largest component of the wastewater treatment plant. Um, the good news is those were just replaced, um, in 2019 to 2020. They have a life cycle, I believe of about 10 years. So that'll be on the capital plan every 10 years. You have to look into the sewer collection pipes, the pump stations and just miscellaneous components of the sewer treatment plant. The water treatment plant, um, same thing. They were funded the, uh, granular activated carbon, which is called GAT. And that was approved last annual town meeting and they're working on that now. All the other components there that you'll see is the distribution set, system, situat hill tank, bear hill tank. And many of these items have been, um, updated as the years have gone on. So there's no major replacements with some of these items. And we're waiting to get the full capital plan for water to determine, um, some of the larger things on the horizon. And next we have the transportation and roadways. There's much more to this slide than you can see here. But, you know, we have the school buses and we have 49 miles of roadway, 37 miles of publicly owned roads, 12 miles of, uh, private roads, we have the sidewalks and fencing. And, and what I can say about this is the school buses, we have, we've studied several different locations to house those school buses. Because they seem to be the item that, you know, the, the trickier item for the schools. As of right now, we're leasing some space, um, from a private owner to house those school buses. As far as the roadway, sidewalks, um, chapter 90 funding, there's, there's a placeholder every year in the capital budget plan to accomplish. I, I don't know how many miles of roadway there is a year, um, but it is in the capital plan and we've been funding it for many years now.
And do we have a sidewalk schedule?
Brian does have a sidewalk schedule, I didn't get it in time and unfortunately he's.
Has it ever been implemented, um, in terms of like, is it an ongoing sidewalk schedule or is this a new schedule?
It's new.
Master plan implementation.
Yeah, yeah.
On that, and they've identified a number of segments with Brian Joyce and Chief Federico. So I know they've kind of identified how, how long some of these areas are linear feet. Just to try to come up with a, a plan to, to go forward, to come up with a funding schedule for. So that is in the works currently.
New space is actually a link, a longer way of link from Pharaohs down to Thurya.
People are very excited about that.
So that was just approved finally by conservation, so.
Okay.
And it's funding for that, so that's something that's been waited. And now with the units of affordable housing going in, uh, CJC Highway, they can mount a line just down the first street that's going. It's on Turkey Hill too, I can walk their dogs and go across the street to Turkey Hill too, so.
Has anybody done a cost segregation study?
What was that?
A cost segregation study?
I'm not quite sure what that is.
In any large, um, project, you will do a cost segregation study. And what that does is it takes all the components, it takes a look at their cost, their useful life. What you're really, it's done for tax purposes because you could depreciate plumbing versus electric. I mean, literally you could do that on the tax code and it's frequently done. The utility is that you get a list and their companies have loved to do this. They list all these little things, what they cost new, how quickly they depreciate down to nothing. And then replace it. So then when you budget, you say, all right, we have X component, it costs a hundred dollars, it lasts 10 years. So we have to allocate $10 a year in our budget planning. We may not actually pull the money out as that's called, that's a cost segregation, it's a wonderful plan.
Right, so, so with that being said, I believe our asset essentials does exactly what you're saying.
That's what I was thinking, very simple.
Yeah, um, you, you load the information in, it gives you the, the lifespan, it does give you depreciation. Uh, it tells you, it, it awards you as to when it needs to be replaced. So I think it's very similar to what you're, you're saying.
Because I'm looking at the schools, right? We, if we've been able to get that done earlier, we wouldn't be fight, facing this crisis that we're going to run into. I hear from the parents all the time that, that the school is badly deteriorated. And of course, the other side of that is when some, when you have to replace it and it's gone so far, it costs a lot more to do that. And this is some of the long-term fiscal planning and I think you're doing a great job with capital budget. And I see Sam is smiling, so I know I said the right thing.
See through a mask?
Well, we just came from a tour of the school.
That must have been illuminated.
So information technology, um, Chris touched upon, um, much of it earlier, which is the fiber data center, uh, network reconfiguration, community hotspots in 5G cell service. So those are the items that we're, we're discussing, um, long-term planning. Some of these are low-hanging fruit and we'll start with them along. Um, as far as the har, harbor. So we have 1,350 linear feet of publicly owned seawall, the Parker Ave boat ramp, the border street bridge, the harbor tide gate, the breakwater, which as you know, situat comes into play there, and government island. Good news is we have a shock free contract in place. So we're addressing many of the, um, the cracks in the seawalls. We received Seaport Economic Council funding for the construction and the design and engineering of Parker Ave Boat Ramp. Border Street Bridge is a work in progress. They've been working on that for the past, I would say, eight to 12 months. And Government Island, we were also awarded Seaport Economic Grant funding for the engineering and design of that project. So as soon as we kick off Parker Ave, we'll start concentrating on Government Island. Parks and Recreation, so, um, there's, there's a lot here. We have Milliken Field that's used for lacrosse soccer and baseball, um, the Bancroft Tennis Courts, there's five courts there. We have Barnes Field, the Beechwood Field, Sawyer Street and the Town Common. We're happy to report that the field study is in progress. They did come two weeks ago prior to the storm and did a drone flyover of all the areas. They boot on the ground last week to assess all the fields. And when they're assessing all the fields, they're also looking at potential sites for additional fields. And they're also looking at, um, things that aren't fields. In that they're looking at skate parks and innovative things that they can bring your old house. We are in process of renovating the infield at Milliken, um, baseball field, coming up rate. We bid the concession stand twice now. We've received, um, no bidders.
Wow.
The challenge there is supply chain is very tight. And it's posing a challenge the, the way in which it was designed. We did go back to the architect and ask for a different design that would be more appealing. And we're going to put that back out to bid so we can address it in the spring. We found stairs that were, um, built many years ago, probably an Eagle Skull project. They were wonderful, um, for many years. They've deteriorated, so we have gone to CPC to ask for funding to replace those stairs. And we're waiting for a vote at special town meeting. Once that's approved, we'll, we'll get those stairs on order. The Bancroft Tennis Courts, we had some prep sealing down there in 2019. Obviously, those courts have been part of our larger study. For Beechwood Field, we had funds approved at annual town meeting, uh, for a new basketball court. Same for Sawyer Street, funds were approved for the new basketball court. And the Town Common, we got a complete streets grant for the walkway, sidewalks, road and parking. So we do often still look for those grant opportunities to see what we can pick off here. And just keep our eye on the prize for the larger plan. That's it.
All right, wow, that's a lot.
It's a lot, so, so the town has a lot of assets and there's a lot of infrastructure here, but we are working on it. We've been working with capital for many years on some of the smaller items, but these are those major items, you know? Where are we going to put our public safety building? How are we going to address all the fields in town and tennis courts and, um, the Town Common, which is the center of the community and the town hall? And it just goes on and on and on, right? But we are addressing all of them. We're finding funding opportunities as we can. And hopefully in the next couple of months, you know, we'll, you'll see a, a 20-year plan for all of these items.
And again, infrastructure is the, the buzzword right now, the magic word. Hopefully, we will be getting a lot more funding opportunities and grant opportunities and options for tax dollars coming our way for some of these projects too, which would offset a lot of costs.
The fact that we, we, we've had a nice track record, uh, with the state and others, uh, the last six, seven, eight years, puts us in a good place, plus we have projects in design.
Right.
So, um, some of the water and sewer, probably we have studies, you know, so we're ready to move forward with some of these. We were talking, uh, we were talking about Alstair, to make sure we get those plans done. So we're in the pipeline for the spring, we're grappling with those money things available. The water, the sewer, even broadband, you know, that might, we may be able to fund some of the dense spots in town.
Yeah.
With some of that, they, the, the new services are great, um, they, they require more transmitters in different locations. And we have to figure out ways of doing that, a way that people are going to be comfortable with. And, and again, I hate to say, you know, you think the last mile is always like, you know, it's in other parts of the country or the state. We have parts of the class that with the wiring, you know, it's just not good. And I'm talking electrical, I'm just talking about cell systems. I think there will, there'll be other opportunities. We know that there'll be more funding for education, there's going to be more funding for green energy. And, uh, and we're talking about getting money for a study for the harbor in general. Or its resilience, what do we, you know, what do we need to do to, we're not going to put a diaphragm thing like Holland Pass out. Harbor, but we know that the breakwater needs to be approved. And what can we do to make some of that more resilient? The washing, other areas that need, you put the store, the school. Lot of old pieces, uh, and, uh, as we were talking earlier, uh, these, I think they need to look at these generations. We have five, I don't think, capital, that's for maintenance and equipment. These are really generation, I think, putting them in a much longer timeframe, that means power of the capital plan is really. It's, it's almost like a second capital.
Right.
That looks at infrastructure. And that also identifies when we need to start beating the bushes to turn funds. We, it's got to take some time to get into that habit, but once we do, we want to be able to do it. So it becomes part of the town's DNA and you plan for this thing. So it's not, you know, all of the pipes don't turn 100 at the same time and you have to replace them all. And when this building was, was acquired, one of the things that we did was develop, was, was charged. The board said, hey, get an analysis of what it's going to cost, let me pay it for next time. We have, um, and, and Nick and his team are doing, the town's invested in a software, which I was talking about, the asset management software and also School Dude, which manages the, the, the buildings on a, on a daily basis. There's electronic records of things we can have. So the town is now has this great foundational, uh, base to be able to do long-term proactive maintenance. As Jack explained, too, you know, you want to make sure that you do that. You're going to invest like this, we want this to be, look as good as new as long as possible. And then we want to make the repairs that are necessary to it. So it always looks good, even if there's parts that have been changed. And it, it takes, um, the tech, the technology base that we didn't have eight years ago, we now have, which now becomes a platform for things, things like this. So, thank you.
Yeah.
And, and Don's got the table on all the spot, right? Because he's sweating every penny of the effort.
You know.
Mark, Jack.
Thank you. I can't help myself.
She raised her hand, but you started talking.
Oh, I didn't see her handle, well, she goes first.
Go ahead, Jack, go ahead.
Don't take too long.
So that's an impressive list. Thank you all for gathering it. You know what I'm going to ask, which is in terms of the 20-year capital plan, I think a part of the challenge also is to figure out potential sources of funding for all of this, which is our collective job, it's not your, it's our collective job. And so I think the sooner we can begin having real conversations about that, including what is possibly eligible for grants and we need to prioritize, like we were talking about the border street bridge. Yes, there's money for that right now, but if we can get state grants for that under a resiliency grant, maybe we can save that 500,000 and move it back into capital budget. I think we're going to quickly see, and the reason I love math is it's hard to, hard to, you know, fudge numbers in terms of like X, you know, one plus two equals three. We're going to quickly see that our capital budget that we've allocated is just, it's going to be hard to cover all of this in any sort of reasonable way whatsoever. So we're talking about potentially lots of, well, I shouldn't say, I don't know, I don't want to prejudge it, but, um, there's, there's definitely debt exclusions on the horizon, I think, to potentially address some, if not a lot of this activity. And that's okay, I think we should have an honest conversation about that because we, I think, need to have a realistic sense of what this means. And it also, I think, might help us try to figure out too, when we think about what we can get grants for versus what we can't get grants for, you know, how to maybe move the list around a little bit. Because to Tim Davis's point, there's a lot of federal money coming out and, um, there's certain things that we will, it will be eligible for, but certain things it won't, it just won't. And so I think we're going to have to maneuver that. And some of it's going to come from enterprise funds as well. And so, and MBSA, so, you know, lining that up, I think, is critical in terms of like. in MBSA. So, you know, lining that up, I think, is critical in terms of like expected potential sources. So we can also see where we can look to, for example, if we do school and air handlers, MBSA is a potential source of money there. So maybe we make a future capital budget grant contingent on them for seeking funds through MBSA. And then if they don't get it, then capital budget kicks in, you know? Because I think we're going to have to start maneuvering the money. Once we see the full list, it's going to be a little shocking and so to help soften the blow, maybe in terms of what the next 20 years looks like. I think that would help to try to identify other sources that could be out there to manage some of this. At least, I don't know, maybe I'm just cynical.
No, I strongly, strongly support that. I think when we commit to something, we need to know how it fits in the overall capital allocation. We need to have the money and we should have a, some kind of fail-safe mechanism in which there are funds there for anything. The easiest thing to do in the political world is to promise today, start today and don't pay for it. And then you'll leave the people down the line to deal with the problems that you did. And I think we ought to devise some kind of mechanism, I don't know what it is. Where when you have a project, you have a project which can't be approved unless there is a for sure draconian way to pay for. Then if we do get the grant, that's good. That's extra money. But if we don't get the grant, it's paid for. And we're going to have to say what can we afford and what we can't afford. And if we do it that way, I think we'll find long-term that our overall cost will go down and be containable. And I just think that that's our responsibility as public officials.
I was just going to repackage, Gene, what you were getting at. Part of it is knowing, I guess, what the best way to pay for something is. So I bring this up because obviously we have all this, all this harbor front stuff and climate change. This is all really big stuff. But it's also really expensive stuff. I mean, you know, if you're trying to redo, raise a road, you know, I've got no idea what that costs, but I'm guessing there's a lot, a lot of zeros. And that would get in the way of other really critical stuff. So an understanding of, listen, it's really best if we get funding from X. So even though it's on this chart and we see it's a worry, so we can know that typically it's done not through the town raising money for it. Usually there are other ways to do it. Just a little bit of guidance, like even with schools. Like if there's something that, you know, let's say we got money, you know, X years ago and another round will come up, but we got to wait. That's kind of good education for us to say, hey, listen, we're really shooting for 2025 of this because that's when something's going to kick in that we can really leverage. And that's just, I guess, education and understanding. That way we see on the timeline that like, okay, we really got to wait for this to attack something. And if somebody has a concern, we already have the understanding. We can tell our residents like, yeah, this is on the list and we're just, you know, we're just waiting for our turn. Or, you know, the second is ready for us, we're going to attack it. So that's a good understanding, like educational.
And there are pockets of money that are designed for different things. One very new example for us is secret income accounts. Up until there was a pivot in this administration to look at the entire coast, not just the traditional cities. And that opened up a funding stream that never existed before. And we went there, we did the harbor plan, we did the analysis, the committee got together. And that's our blueprint. And it's now, we just, we've run a million dollars in grants just from Parker F. That's changed the entire dynamic. And it's the same thing with the 10 dock. I mean, that Government Island period, we built the century. And the fact is the State Department, and as long as we show, we know what we're doing, we're good stewards of the money, we do successful projects. There's funds now, if we spend, if we have grant money for that, they may not business. They may not be grant money for something else, or then we can use our money for those. And the same thing with water and sewer. We know there's a lot of water and sewer money. It's generation. The nice thing is we actually have plans for this. We already know what has to happen to our water system. And we have a track record of meeting state standards and being on top of things. And we're also on the waterside, we're a minor regional provider. We've been selling water to kingdom to help balance the living concept for many years. That's, I think, a lot of more opportunities too. You know, whether or not there's other opportunities for that. We actually are partnered with already. And so then their state, I think we're, I think we're in a great, great opportunity. There's also so, almost so much we can buy off too, right? We're only, we're still going to be a 83% people, right? And we have a great staff, professional staff. I appreciate the fact that the community has said we want to collaborate and we want really good people and we want to work with everybody to get it done. There's also just so many families, right? So, you know, even if the money was available, I don't, we build the water and sewer points at the same time. Which is just too much to do those things. So you're all, the prioritizing that all of you collectively are going to do is going to make all of our jobs easier too. You're going to say, these are the five things we're going to get done. And we say, well, here's the funding. Some things, we're not going to be able to have it at the same time. We have, as Don was pointing out to me too, it's not like this wants to be done in six weeks. We have multiple years worth of funding. It's going to be going on. I think we need to be committed and keep things going. And then, you know, prioritizing what we do. When we, when the community said, hey, we want this, we got it, we got it done. We've been able to do some really great small projects. We're going to stay on my kind of hand, right? That was a multimillion dollar project. We paid 100,000 dollars. We put a lot of other time and energy into it. And it was successful. Now, there's a lot of work to make that partnership. We, I think we have a good relationship with the state. I think the state understands that people are serious. They're engaged. And we have a great state senator representative who really put that in. It's a window of now.
Plus, we got an awful lot of really interesting public meetings out of it.
To go back to this, this is really a question for all of you, but I mean, the point that Tim Davis raised earlier. Do we feel that we have the bandwidth among staff to actually fight and be contenders for all these future grants coming and all this future money? Like what? I am a little bit worried based on the amount of money that's going to be available that all of you are going to be overextended. And I do want to respect our staff and not expect you to do things that are impossible, that take multiple.
We do need to hire people when we need to, right? And we've done that with some grant applications. You know, we're not the tech, you know, we have, we have some great engineers, but if they, if all they they have so many other things to do. So we've retained people to do specified what we're doing with the brickwork, right? What kind of, we're bringing someone on to work on the paintwork. We don't have that level of expertise. It's not a short money, but even if it's a few thousand dollars or 10,000 or more, you get someone who's very project specific or expert. The grant, you know, there's always this, the grant writing is always the beginning. You have to manage the project.
Oh, yeah, no, it's a full-time job.
And we're talking about that too. We actually, I do believe that we're going to need support in planning. And we're going to need support in DPW in a broader sense. Because we, whether it's, and again, I don't think, we're not talking about 30-year career. We're talking about people who'll be here for a few years for project work and then move on to something. So what form that takes, I don't know. Could it be funded through grants? Some of the grant money perhaps? I think we have to, we have to be doing that. I think that's been raised. We are going to have to have some additional support. And now again, it has to be part of the overall package of funding. We're not talking about long-term commitments. And I understand I'm concerned about OPEC too and all those things. We're talking about having people for short-term windows, I think. Very project specific.
And very cost effective. Specify what you want done, have them do it. We have brickwork that needs to be done. We don't have to hire masons. We don't have to, we can hire a masonry company and they'll do it cheaper and faster. And if we don't like them, we fire them.
It's more of just planning what we need too, right? Like what support do you all need in the near future especially? To feel that we're accomplishing all the things that we want to be. And we might not know the answer to that tonight, but it's.
Should, for example, let me just throw an idea. Should we be looking for a specific grant writer for the purposes of ARPA and infrastructure funds that we can later then try to seek reimbursement for through a grant? To the extent that we can maneuver that, but someone who can help go through the entire list and say, hey, this is, you know, green for go. This would be a good one. This needs more work. Yellow, red, no, this is out of it. And then because ARPA is sufficiently broad, you know, maybe we could get reimbursement. I would assume we could get reimbursement for that person with the, with the green projects, potentially. Which is, this is why I'm throwing it out there, to have some more resources.
I know we have an ARPA update on the agenda too.
Oftentimes when you apply for a grant, you have to skill in the game too. You can't use the grant to apply for the grant. But again, I said, we've got to leverage money for green communities to help support green communities' projects, right? So that we go to different pots of money. And sometimes you can, you can get, Lieutenant Governor was talking about this, layering grants. Well, that's kind of what it is. And we've been, actually with Green Communities, there's one example of that, where we have money, and we, some of the reporting is somewhat, I don't want to call it onerous, but it's complicated. But it's onerous and complicated. So, and we have a grant that actually allows us to retain an NPC to do that work. And they win and we win. And it keeps us on the path to keeping the grant.
I think the, I would support. Boy, this is hard for me to say, but I'll get it out.
That's what I've been trying to have happen. I want you to have to say it.
This is unfair and I have to do it in public. But I would support, I think it is a cost-effective way to get a very skilled grant specialist. That is available to the various town things, so you can use them. You'd have that up-to-the-date expertise. And I think that's a thing where we'll pay for it. And also a corollary advantage would be.
We have to spend a little money to make a lot of money.
That it would allow some of our skilled staffers to spend time doing where they're very, very cohesive, specific skills, so.
I'm proud of you, Jack. I'm proud of you. That was a big, that was a big moment.
Can I go to motion do it, Jordan?
I'm very proud of you. That was a big breakthrough we've had tonight. But seriously, let's, this is something that we need to be talking about in the very near future. Figure out what you need, what we need as a town. I think that we're all supportive of adding some type of support, part-time support staff, whatever we need to help be, you know, and good with all these projects.
I think it'll be interesting to see what grants come down the pipe and what eligibility within the grant application. So specifically for CARES and ARPA, part of the funds available, we could have used for managing. We took it on internally, but for both of them.
Like Gene was saying.
For management, for processing bills. So some of these other grants that are coming down may have those same things within there. So if we're getting the grants, we may be able to get a grant, part of the grant writer.
Right. And this is the other thing that Gene mentioned, which I'm almost worried that it's that all of you don't have the time to be even sitting there searching for which are the grants that could offer this, or I mean.
Well, that's the point.
Right, I know. But it's also, well, it's that part, but then also helping to write them and prepare them and, you know, whatever it is that we need just to save all of you time.
Are there specialists firms to do that, Michelle?
But I think you, I think you then create almost a, not a problem, but something bigger. So you, you're awarded these grants. Who's going to manage them all? The grant writer writes them and they get, the money comes in. And say you get five grants, well, I just don't think we have the bandwidth in-house to manage them to the level that they should be.
No, I know. And this is, I think we're trying to clarify where the bandwidth is needed in all these parks.
Yeah, sure. Who's a consulting firm that could do this?
The point.
And actually manage the day-to-day so that those firms that are actually putting the pipes in the ground are submitting their their daily time sheets with their prevailing wage rate to this firm that is basically on our behalf managing. So, you know, back in my auditing data when they had a ton of American Recovery back 10 years ago, whenever that was, you know, they had engineers overseeing the project essentially on behalf of the town. And they do their payment application.
That's part of the grant though.
Yes.
Part of that. So what we're talking about is, is somebody who will actually go out and get the grant and work with Michelle and other, you know, people in the town to clarify that, to find out what's available, how we can get it, and then do that. And that's a whole art form in itself. And when you, Michelle, when you nodded that you were aware there are firms that do these searches. And when I was doing a lot of stuff in Boston, there's a lot of firms that I was aware of were very, very good at that. And they're surprisingly cost-effective because they're not doing it for just one community. So they're on top of a bunch of things. And then this allows our local staff, you know, the local expertise to manage and determine what we want. And that would be something that, you know, I would be favored.
Yeah, to Don's point though, we do need to make sure we have someone that's managing.
It all steps in the process. I feel like we want to make sure every step, sorry, you know, yeah, go ahead. It's every, we need every step.
Yeah, I was just saying, I was just a grant reviewer for HUD a month ago. On the way that it was discussing, the chairperson for the review process, so a pretty good sense of what happens, at least with this particular grant. But you have to look at the particular grant, but they will build into the grant typically the management of the funds, assuming the grant is eligible for it. So that's the threshold question of eligibility. But then as long as we have the people ready, I think we can go. But it's having all of those components because the grant specialist might be very different than the manager.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Different, different.
I think we're all in agreement here that we want to just help make this easier and better for you all individually and for the town. So perhaps we can have an update soon about maybe more details or specifics about what we need.
And I think part of that will be going through this list and saying, what's grant eligible and what we can accomplish within the next year or three years.
And larger amounts driven by what's in our plans. What are we trying to do? And if you want to. Sometimes it's an opportunity to be presented and predicted. A lot of the time it's, we have our plans, shake the tree, that's fun. Home street for this.
All right. Any final thoughts from anyone on this? I know we have to move on to our budget update FY22, but Sam, oh, go ahead.
My only final thought is this is all such great information going to our communications goal. We should, I think, always be thinking about how to take that information and distill it for the public in a good sort of you know, transparent way. I found the Capital 10-Year Plan extremely informative. You know, this will probably end up being a report, I would imagine, to some extent. But again, just wanted to always put a flag in for that because it's, it's pretty dense too.
Can you condense that into a one pager? Interesting. I know you can.
It's almost like we need a staffer to do it that we don't have.
You're pushing it. Neither did I, and I said it.
So we can condense this into a one pager, which would be similar to the capital budget plan that you see, which is instead of 10 years, you'll see a 20-year outlook. You'll see all the projects listed. And funding the way we lay it out. But of course, we're not going to know those grant opportunities yet. So it'll be a fluid document. But yes, we can do that.
We'll just have to blow it up. Mason's big on this.
Zoomed in.
Similar to the. Yeah, what you guys do.
Yeah, and we can put this as backup detail.
Okay, that's great. All right. Are we ready to move on to the budget update? Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Sam. You're welcome to stay for the party.
Yeah, you can stay, Sam. This is really.
Yeah, we're not kicking you out, but it's Don's show now for this next.
My only comment is, if you look at the 10-year capital plan, we have far more surplus for dollars than we have the ability to fund. Unless Don and Chris decide to increase greatly. Clearly contribution to the state. Well said. That's why you're on capital budget.
All right, so. You know, I'm going to go through, I sent an email to Chris with kind of my summary. I'm going to go through that first. And then if you wanted, the reports up on the screen, I know Justine has them, but I'm going to go through this briefly. And then if you have questions, we can kind of. So October 31st is the period we're looking at. Overall, everything for all our appropriate funds, water, sewer, and general fund are in line with our expectations through October. For the general fund, just a few things to note. We've collected about $125,000 in tax revenue, which again, I feel like I talk about this every month, but it's something key to point out is this is essentially an unbudgeted revenue. Prior year taxes that weren't paid that end up getting collected the next year is essentially just unbudgeted surplus. So it kind of helps with our annual free cash and annual budgeting. Local receipts were 10.7% compared to the same period last year. Based on my last report, I believe in August, it's still primarily due to motor vehicle exercise. We had a few, one or two extra commitments from 2021. So we're seeing a little extra revenue related to prior. Based on my last report, I believe in August, it's still primarily due to motor vehicle excise. We had a few, one or two extra commitments from 2021. So we're seeing a little extra revenue related to prior year related excise bills. And another big driver of that is our license and permit revenue. So we've already collected about 93% of our budget for the building permits. We've just seen a big number of permits. And I also believe the reason we're seeing this higher number is is I know John Howland, our new building filling, he he's instituted essentially affidavits. So once a building permit is issued and the job's complete, you know, somebody goes back to double check, you know, if you applied and it was going to be $10,000 worth of work, but it was really only, it it ended up being 30. We collect the extra fee because the fee is based on the cost. So, you know, really trying to make sure that we're we're getting the value we should be at with building permits. And I know that's something that he's implemented. And then we also received our first quarter of our meals and room stacks, which was up almost 40% over the first quarter last.
That's good.
Now, again, first quarter last. And again, you know, that first quarter payment we received was not just a quarter, because if you remember, the state extended the due date for for businesses to submit. So that first quarter is actually more than just one quarter's worth. That could have technically, it would have been six months worth, depending on when the business is actually submitted. So, you know, to me, that's that's a good indicator for our first quarter of 22 to see that that revenue increase. And then just looking at the overall, the departmental budgets, at this point, I'm not seeing any issues with any of our departmental expenditures. But that's something that we monitor every week, every month, as as I'm approving PO, as I'm taking a look at the department lines and nothing's sticking out at this point. So take any questions if you have the general funds side.
All right.
Yeah. So one, did we hear back on the state on the sales tax data? Just to the rest of the board, no, I requested to see if we could get general sales tax data from the state under the, for the purposes of understanding what, putting a number on potential lost economic revenue from the four days we can have power. So you're basically looking at an average and saying, you know, if we want to talk to utility providers, if we want to research grants, you know, having a a number of saying there are, you know, X millions of dollars were not able to be spent because of the length of this.
That's a good idea to have that data set.
Do we hear back?
I got an email from Lisa, the woman I think I C C'd on initially when I was.
Yeah, I remember that. I didn't see a reply from her.
She she emailed me and I don't know if she C C'd everybody at the beginning, but she did say that she she didn't hear back yet from the other texts. I forget the the group that she sent my request to. But she said she was going to follow up. I think that was on Friday. So I'll I'll follow up with her tomorrow to kind of see what status is on that.
The other thing I wanted to just bring up to the board, not really for discussion, but just kind of put out there, you know, we're talking about to kind of link to the capital budget planning. And we've got all these building permits. You know, there may be a discussion where we want to say, is there a space for some type of capital surcharge in building permits? You know, as our, as our town is.
Interesting.
Getting more and more built and, you know, and there's, there's more and more money flowing into the town, you know, we may be find ourselves shortchanged a little bit. When it comes to, you know, kind of the economic load that the new development is putting on our schools or whatever, this may be a discussion we could have to say, let's reserve some of this money. That way we have a dedicated pot from from at least this this building revenue, building permit. Because, you know, that's, I I think we're seeing that accelerate.
Yeah. So to to that point, I mean, the one, one thing you can do when you look at your building permits over a certain amount of time, you could dedicate a certain amount of that to go to a special fund if you wanted to at a certain point. Again, I I think you'd want to see the continued growth of the the building permits because right now, obviously, that's a a big number within our our budget. So we wouldn't want to start cutting our budget to.
Correct.
To to start putting money away. But if we continue to see. This good revenue stream exceeding our budget expectations, that's definitely a good consideration we can do. We could research and look into adding another surcharge.
It's an idea.
It it's an idea to 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 look into. Yeah, I know it's hard. I've had a conversation with other communities in my counterparts in other towns. And, you know, fees have to be based on something. So I I think you could come up with a.
Structure, fee structure or something.
It just has to be reasonable as to, you know, why you'd be doing another surcharge on top of something. But it's something we can definitely explore, run it by council.
Interesting idea, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a very good idea. There's a couple of things that comment in in many communities mitigation fees. We have to also, by the way, we should be aware that we are hoping that there's a limit to what, how much coacid is going to be paved over. And we don't, I think I speak for most people in town, we don't really want it. So at some point, some of these things will go down. It will be recurring things of remodeling, taking an older house and like what's happened on the hillside, which is overall economically very powerful for the town. However, mitigation fees, for instance, when you do something in Boston, the first thing the city is going to say, all right, we're going to have to rebuild this road. The road's going to have to be wider. We're going to have to do these sidewalks. And taxpayer is not going to pay for that. So we're going to have a mitigation and it's very, very well established. And we should certainly have that as part of our fee structure mitigate the economic impact of the community of a new development. It's not controversial. It's done everywhere. Developers, of course. They're always. Fleeing poor, but fact of the matter is the community should not be paying the extra burden, financial burden of somebody else's project. So that will go a long way to 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 solving that.
So before we get down too far, might I recommend that we put on, we asked Don to just prepare something and then we can.
Give us, I, we don't need to go down the whole rabbit hole. But Don, if you're intrigued by it as well, I think we can break, come back to this conversation with a little.
Welcome to call me because I was on a lot of things that approved a lot of.
Sure. I was actually just, not to go too far deep, but just talking about the plan implementation, kind of go through some of what other communities may have done. And I already started reaching out to counterparts. So. I'd be happy to come back and talk more about mitigation and things like that.
Might I add to the list film fees, speaking of extreme impact to our town and.
Sorry, Jean, could you repeat?
Film, film.
Film, okay.
Max, Sony and others who avail themselves.
And I'm curious what other towns do for that as well.
Yeah, yeah, it's worth studying.
Probably the first time they have stars in their eyes, the second time they want to kill them.
The fees with the producers and people coming into town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Renting our town to to do your movie. For free and we're putting our own police force to, but I think they do pay for the.
Yeah, yeah, no, they do pay. Yeah. All right. Any final questions about this?
I got two more for sewer and water.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sewer was down about 3.1% overall from last year. And and a big part of that was because we're not charging for the sewer crime departments anymore. So that was just a natural decrease. I expected to see decrease there. That betterment payoff timing, but then we actually have received sewer connection fees. We eventually received, I think, over $60,000 or 50% more than we had last year. So there's more people connecting to our sewer. And then just looking within the department budgets, again, we're in October, I wouldn't expect to see any issues in any of our departments, but still not seeing anything in the sewer department. The water fund, their total revenues as of October were up almost 15%. This was mostly primarily due to connection feed as well. They had already collected almost $200,000 in connection feeds. A good chunk of that was from the new C J C project. But again, that's, these are drivers that kind of help the budget every year. Essentially attributed to their retainer in calculation in the year. There's one important thing to note though at the end, and I hate to give bad news. Not necessarily bad news, but our our second quarter water sewer commitment just came in a bit low. We had such a rainy last quarter that our our bills have come in low. So. For water, our commitment was down 264,000 from last year and about 91,000 for sewer. So there's billing, that's billing, not necessarily what we're collecting and taking in, but it's just something to note that it's, you know, we'll have to monitor going forward. We just implemented new rate structures. So this is a business we're in and it's weather dependent sometimes. So, you know, you could do the best forecasting, but you have a terrible year, well, not a terrible year, a quarter, where you're not selling water because it's rained almost.
Certain irony, right? Because.
I know.
We we discussed sorts of the water department, their rate structure to to try to discourage irrigation. And now we're sitting here.
And then it rains over again.
You know, there's a, there's an irony to that.
Is there anything besides weather that could have affected this? Or do we think it's solely weather related?
I think it's solely weather.
Okay.
So have have the tier three charges gone into effect? And have we seen a drop in the usage from those tier three clients?
They have. They've gone into effect. I don't know the data on it, but.
I thought we dropped the third tier because they couldn't, they couldn't figure out the multifamily.
I think they, I think they took out the multi families. So they want to find the third tier of multi families, but they're still applying the third tier again to to kind of limit the excessive water.
Yes, of course.
Right.
Which now we aren't giving the money for.
Yeah.
But so again, like we do every month, I monitor these. Looking at other, you know, unfortunately, we're down on the commitment, but we still, we still sell water to Lindon Pond. We still have connection fees. So, you know, we'll have to look to see really where we're at and factor that into our next year. Again, just wanted to point it out that maybe not as bad as I'm making it seem, but I just want everybody to be aware of the decrease in the quarter two.
That's helpful.
And that's what I have for.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don.
These updates are really helpful and I think it's good that we're doing them more frequently because it really helps us all get a handle on stuff. So.
And if you want to call me sometime about those mitigation.
Oh, sure. I'd love to. Yeah. And just the one thing about the monthly updates, it's kind of easy to go through. We're all kind of obviously paid. We're doing them.
You do have homework to talk about mitigation.
Yes. The other reason I'm here is doing.
I was going to, you got our one now. This is.
So I I prepared.
Brought up a lot tonight.
Talking points. And then I just figured I'd print them out so that I was going to be talking about.
Justin, you have a copy of this that you can put up on the screen so other people can watch it.
I apologize. No, I I kind of did this kind of last minute.
That's fine.
I'd be happy to put it up and have it available on the website.
Add it to the to the agenda. Yeah.
So I just wanted to do a kind of a quick update of where we are today. A quick overview of our funds again, 895,000 allocated directly from the U S Treasury. We received our first tranche of payment in June of 2021 of 440,000. That's half of the allotment. They were doing it in two tranches. The amount allocated to Norfolk County. We're getting about 1.6 million. It's, it was 166, but they're taking out two and a half percent of admin fees.
All that.
And a half a percent to fund county projects. So we're actually getting a potential net of 1.61. So in total, we're getting allocated 2.5 million. So where we're at with Norfolk County is I've submitted the required information that they needed to set us up as a vendor, to set us up on their portal. I'm waiting a response back. So it goes to Clifton, Larson, Allen, CPA firm who's managing their portal. So once, once they get the information from the county, I'll get the credentials to log in and be able to start the application.
That would help to have credentials to login.
Yes. So I I actually went through and I viewed their their presentation that Norfolk County did in October. Better understand the application approval process. It looks like a pretty straightforward application process, all electronic and, and, you know, as you go in, it has logic and the field update. So as you go through, it's pretty, it seems pretty easy. And just so you understand the approval process, there's going to be three levels of approval. So when you submit, once we sign up and we determine projects, I'd log in, type up the narrative, enter the project. It'll go to Clifton, Larson, Allen. They review it. If it gets approved, there's either they approve it, deny it, or they request more information. If that gets approved, it goes to Powers and Sullivan. Powers and Sullivan then reviews it to ensure that, you know, it's it's meeting all the eligibility requirements. And then once they approve it, it goes to Norfolk County for them to approve it. So. There's three levels of approval. And then once they do approve a project based on the presentation, they should turn around the funds in a week. The surprising thing that they they said in this presentation, unfortunately. Is currently they're allocating only 25% of the allotment as available right now. They they say it's for cash flow purposes, you know, I think so they can make their money. But they did note that exceptions would be made if you have projects that are exceeding. So obviously 25% of 1.6, we've got 400,000 that they're technically allotting as available right now. If we, again, we'll, we'll touch on this a little bit more, but if we have projects that exceed that that we're submitting, they may make the exception.
So the idea would be that the rest of the allotments would be available at a later date. So if we over allotted now, it it wouldn't affect our total.
Right.
It's not affecting our. Cross of stages.
Right, because.
For no apparent.
Town direct allotment, we got half, half the money upfront. They got half the money in June. They're going to get the other half next June. But I, again, for, they they're stating for cash flow purposes, I think they're just, they're trying to earn their investment income to to be able to.
About to say.
To pay for two levels of review and to pay for this portal and, you know, just in the two.
I would. What our our Norfolk rep here. Go ahead.
I will say, if we do have a specific project in use for the money, and one town has already done this, I forget which one it is, for a water plant replacement. We can go to Norfolk County and say, we want all the money right now. And here's why. And just come forward. And make our case. And I think we should, we can and should do that if there's, you know, specific big project lingering out there that we just want to spend it all.
Absolutely. I think, yeah, they will make, they will entertain exceptions. So, yeah, if we have a branch and our folks reach out, I don't know, if I complained to them and said that we needed to hold them out, they might, might not listen to you directly by that. You know, I think as a group, however it works out. If we had a project that exceeded, I think we could still make it work. Just based on the presentation, I was surprised that they were just allotting 25%. But that's the information I have, you know. And and then just looking at, I wanted to talk about the public sector revenue loss for a second. So. I've kind of focused a little bit on this. So there's basically six buckets within ARPA for eligible uses. One of them is just public sector revenue loss calculation. Basically, U S Treasury set out guidelines on how you go through to calculate lost revenue.
Right.
So basically utilizing that section of ARPA. It frees up the town to essentially pay for a wide range of governmental services. Really, the the limitations on using this section. You just can't use if approved, and my calculations are correct, and we determine a number, we couldn't use it to make deposits into a stabilization fund or pension fund, you'll pay for debt service. But other governmental services and projects could be useful without having to fit into the other specific, really specific eligibility criteria. So I've gone through and done a calculation based on the information that's out there, based on presentations that I've I've been a part of. Our audit firm, Powers and Sullivan, came to Mass Accountants and Auditors Association. He walked through everything that's included in the calculations, exclusions. I've had conversations. So I run the numbers based on the information I have. It looks like our whole 2.5 million could be considered under revenue replacement. I've sent my calculations and all my supporting docs to Powers and Sullivan, to Jim Powers, our our audit partner, for him to review for. Reasonableness and make sure that it's in line. And then if that comes back, I I think that's kind of the way we can look at this as. Going under that presumption for applying for for projects. And it essentially just gives communities a wide range of uses instead of specifically having to stick in with those really strict budgets and not budget, but eligibility uses. And. So again, I think I calculated two and a half, 2.9 million loss. We didn't really lose money. It's the way that they calculate. So not to get too far in the weeds, they basically have you do a base year, which is fiscal 2019.
Right.
And they give you fact, counterfactual information.
Yeah.
So they assume 4.1 increase. And then they roll it forward 18 months. So it's really a 6.4 or 6.1 increase. And then you look at calendar 20. If you look at calendar 20, we didn't have all our recreation programs. So we had a decrease in recreation revolving. School ring. We had timely estate grants from one year to the next was a decrease. So even though we didn't, we didn't lose money, our budget did lose money. So even though we didn't lose money, our budget didn't lose money, the calculation, I think, is kind of set up in a way that certain things kind of benefit you to be eligible for this criteria.
So we did lose the money we otherwise would have gotten in had it been a non-pandemic year, according to their calculations.
Exactly. So again, when I say that we didn't bring in the revenue for recreation, we also didn't have all the recreational programs.
Right, right.
We may have brought in one year for, you know, one year we spent Chapter 90, or we received Chapter 90 reimbursement. The next year we didn't, just because of timely as a project. So that's considered a decrease in your revenue. Six point something percent. And, you know, that's for that little chunk, it's the revenue. So I'm waiting on the response from Jim. He said he was going to look at it this week. I know they're really wrapping up for anybody that does a comprehensive annual course like we do for the audits.
Yeah, they're wrapping up.
A lot of them do it December 31st. I know they're busy, but he did say he was going to try to look at it this week. And then really, I think the next step from here, we've been having internal conversations. I know the board, you guys have been throwing around ideas for, you know, what to use some ARPA money for. And I think the next steps will really just be kind of fine tuning some of the projects and kind of coming up the good list to come back with the board, select board. I think we've already kind of talked about some. I threw some out months ago, just knowing some of the criteria, ongoing COVID expenses. We're still going to need masks. We're still going to need, you know, ongoing nurse services and other things. So there's a number, I think, not loathing for the things that will make sense to apply for, and then bigger ones, once we determine if the revenue replacement is the way we can use it, you know, we've talked about for funding source for town halls, using some ARPA. So again, there's other bigger infrastructure we can do. There's a number of things we can do. So I kind of just knowing, knowing the wide range of use for revenue replacement, I focused on that for now. And just to remind everybody, this is a multi-year grant. We have until, I think, the December, I think it's December 2024, to incur the expense, and then two more years to actually pay it. So it's not as important. I think it's important for us to really get our hands around ideas and thoughts of what we want to do. We don't need, I don't want to say we need to rush, but we have time to do it right. We have time to think about it and still be eligible within the timeline, occurring and extending the funds.
Thank you, Don. This is great. Yeah, Jean.
No, good, sorry.
So in theory, if let's say our entire 2.5 million is calculated as revenue loss, then setting aside the whole Norfolk County is rolling out the money, we could use that arguably for a grant writer or a grant project manager.
I believe we could.
Yeah.
I still just, I guess a footnote I should make on here is I go through our auditing firm, we still have to show the calculate. So CLA is going to look at it, Clifton, Larson, Allen.
Yeah.
They're going to look at it. Powers and Sullivan will look at it again, even though they just looked at it for a week. And then it'll go down to Norfolk County. And even doing that, we're still going to have to explain, I think, the projects that we want to use for. So even if we say 1.6 of Norfolk County is eligible on revenue loss, when I go to apply for it, and I don't think I brought the print up, but you still have to explain what the use of the funds, even though you're using the revenue replacement subcategory, you still have to explain, $100,000 for town hall or $75,000 per grant right here, you still have to give a narrative of what you're going to use the funds for. So.
They can confirm it's not an excluded use.
That, that's my understanding, it's just, I just wanted to be a little hesitant in saying that everything's available, even though I noticed some of the specific things that aren't eligible, there's still, you have, there's three levels of review that is three levels of review. You just don't know one firm versus a commissioner might consider one thing versus another.
We allocate some of these funds into buckets like part of the town hall, baseball fields, school repairs. Could we kind of escrow that money? Are we allowed to do that?
I think, my understanding is right, you just can't put the money into a stabilization slush fund, a rainy day fund.
It has to be explained and allocated.
But if you go for a specific project, yeah, doing a field as a government service, hiring a grant writers as a government service, doing town hall, again, it's a project, part of general government services that the town provides, is providing a good town hall to do business.
You know, I'm sensing from the board members that some kind of process where we were really making sure that when we go forward on large capital things, that they're responsibly funded. And I don't know if this would work into the system.
Yeah, it's a possibility.
Although I think it needs to be to down to project based, we couldn't just deposit 2.5 into capital stabilization fund.
Right. It would have to be more specifically.
And we could say, well, we could say.
And a, yeah.
Town.
Town.
Yeah.
Or we could say, could we do like school repair?
Right. So the one thing when I.
Isn't there a timeframe too, though, that it has to be?
That's what I was.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We have to incur the expense by, I believe, December 31st, 2024.
Yeah, so there is.
2024. Okay, so.
So it's a couple of years we have, but we'd have to make sure we're spending it within that time, which could affect certain projects. And yeah, so again, we have to be very strategic about all this, I think, but it's good to consider it.
So like I said, I got the calculation being reviewed. I'm waiting on a call back from Bill Buckley at the county because I sent everything except for ABA and routing number and account number, because I didn't want to send that chronically. So.
Write it down, leave it on the outside of the hall.
So I'm waiting for him to call me back and kind of the revenue replacement, just kind of his point of view, you know, if we calculate the number, what are we going to have to do to apply? Maybe he can give me a little bit more insight on what their thoughts are on when you're applying for specific projects on revenue replacement. He may be able to give me a little more guidance on how we can be successful, even if the amount of money covers the eligibility of revenue replacement. You know, Bill will tell us how can we apply to make sure that the project we want to do.
And we'd be able to hold the money for eventually, because we're.
Jack wants it under his mattress. Monster. Exactly. So just quick question, Don, when would be a good time for us to bring you back with an update on this? Like, when do you think you'll have more info? When will you need more input from us? Like, when do you want to be on a future agenda?
I would say, I mean, I'm hoping to have a response in the next couple of weeks from June. I know he said he was going to look at it this week. I just know how busy he gets. I wouldn't expect a response from him for, until next week, if not the first week in December.
So possibly our December 14th meeting.
Yeah, because I would expect, you know, Bill Buckley, I just said him, you know, two days ago. So I'd follow up with him and find him here for him by tomorrow, but I'd expect at least a little more information from him if I'm applying for revenue replacement. And then the confirmation on the calculation hopefully in the next couple of weeks from June.
All right.
And then I can come back to update there and we might have a, you know, just a mock-up list of.
That's what I'm saying.
Of those projects.
Yeah. Because obviously some of this has to happen quickly. So let's just keep us updated with timing.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other ARPA questions? Thank you so much, Don.
Thank you.
And Tanya, I know you have been in the waiting room. We're very excited about this BRIC grant update. Thank you for waiting. I feel like we always keep you in the waiting room, waiting. So we're going to welcome Tanya on behalf of the Alternative Energy Committee. Hi, Tanya.
Hello, everybody. I'm so excited, too.
We are so excited. Thank you for waiting, and I know you have a lot of exciting things to update us on. So happy to have you here.
Thank you very much, and thanks for putting us on the agenda. We appreciate it.
And I know you have some slides prepared, so the show is yours.
Thank you. All right, I think I need, let's see if I have permission. I don't have permission, so I'll need permission to share my screen. And I want to say yesterday was a big milestone for us on the BRIC grant. We were able to, okay, I'll try it now. We were, we submitted our benefit cost analysis. We'll talk about that today. And that is supported by a 52-page analysis of what is the problem, what we are proposing, which is very exciting, very elegant solution, and what it would cost. And remember, this is to get 75% of that cost paid for, and we do believe that this would improve the power quality to a portion of the town and with benefits for everybody in the town. And we'll explain that more. All right, let's see. So does everybody see Alternative Energy Committee update on Pursuit? Just want to make sure you're not looking at a different presentation.
Yeah, we can see it. We got it.
Okay, so I'm going to scream through some of this, give you a background, proposed mini-grid design, which I think you'll appreciate a lot. And then the benefit cost analysis that we submitted, what it means, and we'll talk about where some of this money for the cost share would come from. My gut feeling, and Jack will be very happy about this, my gut feeling was that a lot of our share could be basically pay for itself. But obviously, there's uncertainty around that, but we'll talk about that and then next steps. So we are talking about the BRIC grant. BRIC is for building resiliency in communities, infrastructure in communities, and that applies to things like utilities, things that are very important to emergency response. And one of the things, as we anticipated, was this year FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, they were very keen on microgrids. And I think maybe some of the folks at MEMA and FEMA don't quite even know what they are, but they knew they wanted to see some of those proposals for microgrids. We were ready to do that, and so we have a very exciting microgrid project. They did get some last year. They did choose one, which was a hospital microgrid, not as exciting as ours, I think. But we'll talk to you about what ours looks like. This was submitted for the benefit cost analysis to MEMA yesterday. The Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency looks at it first, and if they like it, they then submit a collection of proposals to FEMA on the federal level. So we are called a subapplicant. MEMA, Massachusetts, is the applicant, and we've been working very closely with MEMA. We've been working very closely with National Grid, who's been incredibly collaborative partner, as we hoped. The process itself, I think, has brought improvement to the town. We'll talk about that in a little bit. And I will say Brianna Bennett is absolutely amazing, and the Brain Trust that I have the privilege of being the chair of at the Alternative Energy Committee, those members, including Steve Girardi, who's at the Water Commission, Mike Schmidt, Tyler, all electrical engineers have been incredible, too. So this is very much a team effort. And that first message from our sponsor, because we are not putting all of our eggs in one basket, because we don't know if we will win, we think we should, but we don't know, this Thursday at the Alternative Energy Committee meeting on November 18th, we have a guest speaker to talk about what you need to know about creating a municipal light company. And I just want to say, this is the former general manager of the Hingham Municipal Lighting Company and lighting plant, and we'll get a good feel for what that is as an alternative. I will also note that there were some homes in Hingham, who is their own municipal light company, and Hall, who were out for six days. So being a municipal light company does not necessarily get you out of the woods with respect to storms, but it's just something we need to keep looking at, perhaps as an alternative. So we continue to look at alternative ways to improve our supply. May 2020, just quick background, we developed a framework for looking at a microgrid. National Grid agreed to work with us on phase three as part of a BRIC grant, and this would be what we were calling a downtown mini-grid. It's a mini-grid because it connects a bunch of microgrids, which are within a property line or at a building site, maybe even in your garage, a battery in your garage that makes you a microgrid. It connects a bunch of microgrids around town, across national grid distribution wires that are able to island off that mini-grid. So we're calling it a mini-grid to distinguish it from all the little mini-microgrids that we can tap into and take advantage of. So we've been working on a phase three design, and again, mini-grid versus microgrid, it's very consistent with the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which was developed in conjunction with FEMA, and it addresses directly four of the recommended actions from the Hazard Mitigation Plan that had high or medium priorities, including one of the recommendations, which was to develop microgrid capacity and to work with National Grid to harden the electrical infrastructure. So we are totally following up on this, which should be very good with respect to the FEMA application, if we're chosen by MEMA to do that. And you, of course, recommend that the town manager take the lead on pursuing this with the Alternative Energy Committee, so we are. And here we are, the day after November 15th, when the benefit cost analysis was submitted. All right. This is the exciting part. I can't wait to share this with you. It is so exciting.
It's a big reveal.
It's a big reveal. Okay, so we're going to talk about this first, and we're going to talk about the costs, and we're going to talk about the benefits and what the cost sharing could look like. So what is it on a high level? The Cohasset Core Mini-Grid has distribution system upgrades in a six-mile rectangle, basically downtown. It's Sawyer Street, Pond Street, a little bit of Chief Justice Cushing, and a little bit of going around Elm Street down, touching on the harbor, then coming back up Pleasant Street to go up Pond Street. So we'll explain to you why that's such an important part, but clearly the downtown area is important. It's also important because of our critical infrastructure. It has 7.5 megawatts of battery storage, which would be strategically located at eight critical facilities, and it would incorporate, but it is not part of the grant, it would incorporate two to three megawatts of solar energy arrays that, as you know, we've been pursuing since last year. Those stand on their own. They create credits and benefits for the town on their own. And so instead of bogging it down in the grant application, which could make it difficult for us to find incremental benefits to offset those costs, we have them separate, but they would be incorporated in. And then, and we can talk about this because I think this is the one that will give people pause, a 7.5 megawatt, what's called a rotating generator. This rotating generator is important for grid stability. This is something National Grid calculated we would need. There's a trade-off between the batteries and the rotating generator, but it basically comes down to fault current and being able to provide fault current to keep the system reliable. If we want to go the renewable route, which I think FEMA prefers, we could look at hydrogen, and I think I've mentioned Q hydrogen up in New Hampshire. I think hydrogen is closer than we think, or a renewable natural gas, and we've been talking to renewable natural gas providers. Just so you know, this shouldn't be controversial because we already have rotating generators in town. The water plant has a 400-kilowatt rotating generator, and the wastewater treatment plant has a 350-kilowatt rotating generator. They're used for backup power. So the town's used to rotating generators. This could be one site, or it could be little rotating generators at different sites. It's just for the whole system, it needs about 7.5 megawatts. And that's all connected with the microgrid. And there's a microgrid management, which could be as a service, so no upfront cost. So for the words that are in gray, they are not part of the BRIC grant. The words that are in black are part of the BRIC grant, and that's just because of the way the benefit cost analysis works itself out in what could go in or not go in.
Jean has a question real quick, Tanya.
Yes, sure.
Hey, Tanya, just a quick question, because I'm just puzzling, still looking at the lines and the distribution system upgrade. Would this, if this was in place during the last storm, with all the trees coming down and the wires everywhere, would this have made a difference? Would this have?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question.
Followed up the town.
Yeah, that's a great question. So that is exactly what National Grid looked at. So they looked at five years of very, very detailed outage information, where the outages occurred and why, and what part of the microgrid is some aggressive vegetation management along Pond Street and Sawyer Street. And I don't know if you draw it, now that I'm looking up at the lines, I'm appalled at the branches that are weaving themselves through the lines, like that is recipe for disaster. And frankly, most of our outages in the town come from trees and tree branches. But what this microgrid would do on the distribution system upgrade, it would put what's called tree wire on Sawyer Street. Tree wire is a lot stronger so that if a branch falls down, it doesn't take the wire down. If a whole tree gets uprooted, that's obviously a different story. But again, that's why there would be not trees cutting down, but just trees trimming back pretty aggressively along what's called the backbone. And then with respect to the spurs or the laterals that we'll talk about, it's, this is predicted to be 90% effective, 90 to 95% effective for the backbone, which is in that six-mile rectangle. And then for the spurs, you know, again, I've. And then for the spurs, you know, again, obviously, if a tree goes down in the neighborhood and takes down the lines, this can't help. So neighborhoods, we really need to be thinking about as a town, what kind of vegetation management and tree trimming we need to be doing. And in fact, that was one of the recommendations of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. To look at the trees.
Hold on, one more follow up from Cory.
Chris, we, the feeders went down for 36 hours in this thing. So basically, what, you know, it's a timeline, right? We couldn't fix the local lines until we had the feeder fixed. So, you know, this, it's all about the timeline, so you can just take that 36 hours of where the feeder was the problem, kind of chop that off for anyone who's, who's in this neighborhood. So you go from a four day outage to a day and a half outage, but math doesn't.
It sounded good with the way you put it.
Yeah, you just gotta get it rounded up. So like, if you look at the timeline, you know, obviously, if a tree goes down in your driveway, you're not gonna have power. But the fact that we lost power for more than a day, because there was no power coming into town, just delayed us being able to fix anything, because they're not gonna fix our town if we have no power coming to the town.
Right, but we're still at the mercy of trees.
Somewhere, somehow.
Which, and this.
Go ahead, Jack.
This may not be time to bring this up for Tanya, but so what? Good, good presentation.
She's not done yet.
I've got a lot more to go, but Jack, do you want to wait till the end?
No, I'll just throw that underground wires in the distance.
Okay, let me tell you, because the underground wires are incredibly effective. Of course, there's a higher maintenance cost if you have to dig them up, but Jerusalem Road is a case study for us. And I'll show you how effective it is. The problem is, it's six to eight times more expensive. Okay, six to eight more times. So we got a quote for that, and in that one, the distribution system upgrade alone was around $55 million. And the maximum we can ask for from the BRIC grant is 50.
Wow.
No, I'm aware of that, but I'm just down the line, I think that's probably where we're gonna have to end up.
And all of these solutions have costs, I mean, that's just the reality. So what we're trying to do is find what's the best solution, the most cost effective solution that gives us the most money from somebody else.
No, this would not be within the context of.
All right, you can, you can keep going, Tanya.
Okay, so why we have a problem, we're at the end of the line, the other problem is, it's always the storms and the trees. This is such a cool map, okay. This is an outage rate heat map of Cohasset. This tells you based on color where most of the outages occurs, occur. So what you see is Hull Street and Jerusalem Road definitely has some problems. And those actually have been being addressed. You'll see that poor Aaron River Road, major hotspot. And that I will talk about in a second. And then the middle part is gonna be the core mini grid that we address. And the problem with the middle is it can't tap into any sides or redirect. So three quarters area is being upgraded, it's already been upgraded. National Grid thinks that that bright spot is gonna fade because of some of the upgrades that they've been doing. Jerusalem Road, if you look at Jerusalem Road, along the top, you see it doesn't have outages, because it's all underground. So that is effective, it's just expensive. The southern part, Aaron River Road, because of this process, National Grid realized there is such a hotspot there. And they started looking at, well, what can we do about fuses and reclosers and switches to be able to give some of the other situat line power into that area? And so I think that's going to be improved. And so we're very focused right now on the Cohasset Core Mini Grid project. And that's in the middle. That doesn't mean we can't take lessons learned if we were to proceed with this and take it to the north and to the south. It doesn't mean that we can't look at alternatives like backup home batteries, which are gonna get a huge tax credit through the federal government and other programs and grants. It doesn't mean we can't look at those for now, but we are focused for the BRIC grant on the central part of Cohasset. And you can see why, there's a lot of outages that are occurring in a lot of different places there. So it's a dispersed problem and requires a network. Solution, the yellow overlay is the backbone of the mini grid. And you can see how it runs, it's like a six mile rectangle perimeter. It goes up to the water plant, it goes down to the police fire station and wastewater treatment plant. And we'll talk about what else it covers. But again, we might, if that works, we might think about doing a mini grid in the two other areas as well. And then we could have embedded mini grids that could make us into a mini grid, where the whole town could island off if needed. Okay, so here's why we looked at that particular area. The first is, the town basically has two circuits. One comes from the Norwell Line, which runs through Wompit Duck Park, lots of trees, lots of branches, lots of downtime. The other is a Situate Line, which comes from Hanover through Norwell into Situate into us. If anything hits it along the way, we're done, right, it's out. Two lines, if two lines go down, we have no power in the entire town. Except for this little tiny stub of blue, which runs up South Main Street. But even that is not great, I can speak from personal experience. So in the middle, you can see, this is where the mini grid would be. And you can also see, if I go back, it straddles those two systems, which becomes very powerful to be able to sort of cover, create that missing link to be able to address the spurs that would go out if a tree fell in another part of any one of those other two lines. And the other thing that's important about that is some pretty impressive numbers that by islanding this core in the spurs, we improve our power supply. And this is a detailed line drawing, I'm not gonna get into, but what you can see is, we put in what we talked about, the tree wire along Sawyer Street, there's a lot of enhanced tree mitigation, trimming it back. And Hingham did this, and they've had great success in the vegetation management as far as decreasing their outages. And then there's some other reclosers and islanding switches that they're able to do. And through this, half of the population in Cohasset would receive improved power supply. And we'll show you why in a second. So this is a map that came from the Hazard Mitigation Grant that identifies with those little green dots, all of the critical energy, or critical facilities in town. And there's about 69 of them that require power. And this backbone basically directly goes to and can connect with 55 of them or 80%. So I'm gonna take that back again, see all those low green dots? Boom, there is the backbone of the mini grid. 80% of the critical facilities identified in the Hazard Mitigation Plan would receive direct supply from that backbone. That backbone decreases outages by 90%. The five critical utility emergency response facilities would be on the backbone. All three schools on the backbone, and the warming stations that we use would be triple protected because of the backbone and some of the other support. The other thing about this is there are broader benefits. That red area that I just showed you extends through the spurs and the laterals to receive benefit. And so 1,584 of the National Grid customers, half their customers, and half, around half of the residents would receive improved power supply. The red area that is off of the mini grid, big grid backbone, just based on historical where trees fell and all that, without doing any vegetation management on those spurs, would have a 50% improvement in their outage time. So instead of two days, it'd be on average one day. You know, this is averages, right? So again, if the tree falls down in the middle of your neighborhood and it takes a whole line with it, now we can isolate it and deal with that while the rest of this area can still receive power. It also has benefits for the water department and the wastewater treatment plant, because improves those pumps and those plants. We'll talk about that. And the commercial space, 50% of our commercial businesses by number are improved. They have improved power supply, and by square footage, it's a little bit less. You see there, 38% of the square footage of retail space gets improved power supply, 23% of the offices, and 13% of the service providers, plus four gas stations have improved power supply and four churches. So it is, like I said, on average, it covers about half of our town. Anybody who is on the mini grid, including the critical facilities, gets a 90% improvement. Anybody else, on average, is gonna have around a 50% improvement based on historical outages. If we take an aggressive tree management program, it would be even better, because we would decrease the potential for the branches and the trees to fall. Okay, so just again, closer look, critical infrastructure, a ton of it's covered, including 10 of the 15 cellphone towers, the water storage tank in the Harbor Master, and then critical facilities that people like to go to. I don't know if anybody went to the Dunkin' Donuts at Pond.
That's extra critical.
Let me tell you, it was just so nice on day four of the outage.
Yeah.
So, and they had a total scaled down menu, but the fact they were even there.
I agree.
Of a lovely part of our town. And so when these stores are open, everybody in town benefits, everybody benefits. You can go get your shopping, you can go to the retail stores, you can go get your haircut. I had to change my hair appointment, not a big deal, just saying. Banks are open, Lake Keepers House is open, you know, there's just a lot that can be still done to create a sense of normalcy as you're waiting for the power to come back on in those areas that aren't covered. So everybody in town benefits. Eight batteries help, we can't just build the lines, we have to create the generation that would feed those lines. So there's a trade off between batteries and the rotating engines. And so we sort of came to a, it turns out, half and half. Mainly because we sized the batteries to the load of these critical facilities. So there would be batteries placed at these facilities, this shows the size, the energy estimated cost. So the batteries all in are about 6 million, and we'll get to the total cost in a second. But the key thing about putting those batteries there is if, if for some reason the backbone goes down, these still have the benefit of the backup battery. It's like a double, even triple, because I think we'd still keep the existing backup generation as maybe it's the third lake, it's something for us to think about. So redundancy is important. We also, I had talked about solar energy, you can see that the bids we had received last year are very close to this backbone of the mini grid. And so we could definitely incorporate them in. And then with respect to the orange ones, like the MBTA Station or the Cohasset Sports Complex, Graham Waste Landfill, those could be part of a future microgrid on that first section that we had discussed with the heat map. And, and the key thing, as I've already said, is the solar energy arrays more than pay for themselves. So they're sort of standalone, and we did not put them in the grant, because mainly it would create additional cost without any incremental benefit for purposes of the calculation of the benefit cost analysis. And I'll explain the way that they rank it, is they take those with the highest benefit first, and they keep going down the rank order until they run out of money. So it's just more important, if we're interested in pursuing this, to get the money and to do that. We left the solar energy arrays out for now. Okay, any questions on this design before we get to the next section, which is the cost benefit analysis?
Where would these batteries be placed and how big are they? Just you said there would be a critical areas in terms of size, just because we've also been talking about trying to figure out adding generators to different buildings and different parts of our resiliency plan. I'm just curious in terms of like, how big are they and will we have space for them at these facilities?
Yep, so these are where they would be. There's eight different facilities that we felt were critical. And almost in, you know, rank order with the police fire station and Harborview are most vulnerable. As one microgrid, Deer Hill with our Emergency Response Center as the second. And then, you know, moving on down, the water plant and wastewater treatment plant are not at the bottom, because they're not important. They're there because they already have their backup generation. So this is helpful. The size of a half mega, a half megawatt, the 0.5 megawatt, is about a 20 by 20 foot box.
Okay.
And the one megawatt, 1.5 megawatts, and even the two megawatts, they're more like a storage container, like a big, you know.
I guess I'm just trying to weigh how this, this part of this information relates to our needing backup generators too. So I think we're just thinking about that more broadly.
Or maybe phrase a similar question, don't we already have generators for some?
For some of these places, but again, if you think about like, the difference between a battery and a generator, a lot of times is how the power is created. Right, like isn't that a 101 answer?
Like, yeah, I mean, the batteries serve a couple of purposes, right? The fossil fuel backup generator is not gonna get FEMA funding.
What I'm saying, it's the, the different types of fuel and energy that's used.
The second is, it can use the solar energy that's produced when the grid is down, and if a gas pipeline goes out, like in Texas. Okay, so that's another resiliency benefit there. And, and the third thing is, they can respond very quickly. Some, some of the generators can, but you know, some can't. But again, if we've got 7.5 megawatts of generation and batteries, you know, going into the details of where do these go, where do they fit, what makes the most sense, right? There's still room for that, we haven't done a detailed design study, this is like, still
Right.
solid enough, but the details can work themselves out.
Okay, Jack has a question.
The, what's the life of these batteries? How long before they need to be recharged and what source of energy do you use to recharge them?
Yep, okay, so the, the life versus recharge cycle is different. The life of the batteries is about 10 years, and the recharge cycle depends on when you run them. You know, daily or only during outages. I think what we would do is during outages, obviously, be running them. How long they last depends on how much you're using. So basically, at the police fire station, that four megawatt hours could operate the police fire station in their entirety, plus the Harborview Common Area, which currently is what gets warmed up for four days. Based on their winter load.
Okay, three, three to five days range of.
Without solar. And then those are also sites where we're looking at having solar implemented. And so that would, if, you know, you know how the sun comes up after the storm. It's not guaranteed, but if, if the sun comes up after the storm, then you've got that. The other thing that's helpful about these batteries is on this grid, we also have the rotating generators that can operate on demand. Right, so they can operate at night, charge up the batteries.
Yeah.
The batteries help meet the peak during the day.
And the, and the fuel source is, are you gonna hook into the natural gas pipeline, or are you gonna bring in hydrogen tanks?
Yeah, so for purposes of this proposal, we're talking about fueling it with renewable natural gas, which comes from methane off of landfills and gets injected into the pipeline. It, it gets blended into the pipeline, but we get the credit for it, the renewable natural gas. It could also be trucked to us, you know, if, if we want to compress natural gas, that's a more expensive way to get the renewable natural gas. And then the third, I may have mentioned this before, but Q Hydrogen is doing a demo, a demonstration project, commercial demonstration project up in Grove to New Hampshire. They're gonna be operational, supposed to be operational the first half of 2022. And it has a new form of hydrogen fuel. And their demonstration project is basically running it through a 10 megawatt reciprocating engine. And by the time we would get the award, we would know whether or not that is a viable opportunity.
Are these reciprocating or turbine generators?
So the, if it's the renewable natural gas, it would be turbines, turbines. And if it's the Q hydrogen fuel, it would be reciprocating engines, which uses a liquid fuel. And the ones we currently have are natural gas rotating.
What's the source of batteries? I mean, are these foreign batteries, are these, do we have a domestic capacity to manufacture these batteries?
Yes, there's $6 billion going to that infrastructure under the infrastructure.
Right, good.
I'm not worried about US based batteries.
All right, keep going, Donna.
Okay, okay, I know, I know this always takes longer than we allocate.
That's all right, I kept you waiting.
Thanks, benefit cost analysis, I'm just gonna tell you, before you freak out about the number, remember, 75% of it is covered. If we get the grant, number one. Number two, there's other ways to get our 25% share covered, including some state money. Because they have money from ARPA, they have some other money that they're looking, that's been dedicated to clean energy solutions. And they're very excited about what we're doing. And then the third thing is. And then the third thing is, as I will show, I think we could be in a situation where a lot of that cost share pays for itself, and that does not get counted in the benefit cost calculation that FEMA asks for, because they don't want to know what the revenues are that you might get from it. So I'm going to talk about that as well. And then we'll talk about some of the alternatives and what those would cost. Okay, so also the key thing is to be even considered, your benefit cost analysis has to be above one point oh. And then the higher you are, the higher you go up in the priorities with respect to the grant award. Okay, so here we go. Total cost of this is thirty-four million dollars. And this is how it breaks out. The mini-grid backbone is coming in at an estimate of seven point five million, plus or minus. I won't give you the ridiculous range that National Grid did, but let's just say they covered themselves very well. Connection to the town's critical infrastructure, so connecting to the different sites, we put in two million. And that was based on the mass C E C clear study, interconnections to the distribution system. We don't know if we need to upgrade the Norwell Substation, but we put in a placeholder of three million in case we do. Interconnection to the wholesale system, we don't think would be that much, half a million at most. Rotating generator is the biggest cost, right? It, it's about two thousand dollars per kilowatt to bring in a rotating generator. And so the seven point five megawatts comes out to the fifteen million. And then the batteries, as you saw, were six million. Solar energy arrays are not being asked for funding, and the microgrid management software and services would be software as a service. So there's no upfront capital costs associated with that, which is what would be funded by, by FEMA. So thirty-four million. Twenty-five pro and contingencies included in all of that. I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with these numbers. And if you think about what it costs the town to redo its water system, I think this is very much on par. The other high level of Sandy check we did was in Cleveland, Ohio. They had a one hundred megawatt system. And that one hundred megawatt system, I'm sorry, it's not a one hundred. It was like a forty-eight megawatt system was coming in at a hundred million. And we have like a fifteen megawatt system, about a third, and it's coming in at about a third. So I'm pretty comfortable with these numbers as being what the cost would be. Now, for FEMA purposes, I'm going to go through what the benefits are. And this is where our proposal might fall apart. We think we should get credit for the water plants and the pumps and the wastewater treatment plant and pumps, because it provides power. And it would minimize the impact of outages. Where that might fall apart is those already have backup generation, and we may not get credit for the ninety percent improvement on power supply from the grid, because they already have the backup generation. I think it's possible the utility retrofit category for FEMA may let us count that as benefits, but we're not going to know until Mima looks at our proposal and tells us yes or no. If those fall out, we don't meet the one point oh threshold. We just, we can't. The, the benefit of the expense of upgrading the distribution system and putting in generation and batteries does not, it's, that benefit does not exceed those costs. Because as you can see, the benefit in the first four line items is only about fifteen some million. And it's just, you know, all, all the costs coming in to thirty-four million, it's just not going to be covered by the improved power supply. But then if we do make that ratio above point seven five, we can count reduction in mental stress and anxiety and reduction in lost productivity per FEMA, and that, that gets us up to two point oh. So now I think we could be competitive. But again, that's usually associated with residential structures being protected. And so what we've argued is frozen pipes destroy residential structures and people get stressed out and gave some anecdotes about how power supply and mental stress and anxiety and people who are on power dependent medical devices. So there we are. So that's, that's where our BCA comes out. We've submitted this to Mima. They're going to critique it and push back. They have never done a microgrid assessment before, Mima has not. So we're bringing them along and really pushing them to, to go to the edge. This may just get put into their too hard to deal with pile, and I want to be honest with you about that. So we'll see, we'll see. But I think it is a very sexy project. I think it's a very interesting project. I think it's a compelling project. Not just for us as a town, but it hits all of those checkboxes that they're looking for. Critical facilities, resiliency, a town that's disadvantaged due to climate change because of the bigger storms. You know, there's just a lot of things. Obviously, we're not a social justice community. As much as we've tried to argue here that it is the most vulnerable, who are going to be protected. So we'll see, we'll see. Obviously, once Mima looks at it, you, we need you guys to decide, do we push, push go? If Mima says, yeah, we love it, let's do it. There's still a chance before January twenty eighth for you guys to say, yeah, no, we don't want to do it. Or, oh yeah, let's do it. So we're not at the end of the road, but I just want to let you know where we are. Also, these benefits assume a seven percent discount rate. Obviously, if you went down to a lower cost of capital for the discount rate, or argue that the risk was lower than seven percent, because that number hasn't changed for ten years. You'd get higher benefits. And, and then just as I said, so how do we pay for that eight point five million? These are market values. With that mini-grid, we could sell four point five megawatts into DICE in New England Forward Capacity Market and generate around three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year at the lowest price it's ever traded at. It's been trading higher recently, but the lowest price a couple of years ago was two dollars per kilowatt month. And that's the basis for that three fifty. And that is allowed under, not allowed, required under FERC Order two 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 two, that ISO New England has to allow these types of assets to participate in the market. The rotating generator could get renewable energy credits because of the hydrogen or the renewable natural gas. That's about a hundred fifty thousand a year. The batteries would be eligible for the Clean Peak Energy Standard, and that would go with the solar. It's, it's more complicated. We haven't had time to figure out what that might be worth. But we've put out some inquiries to try to be able to calculate that. And then there are potentially an argument for deferred upgrades, because we are hitting the capacity of our feeders. But National Grid doesn't seem too enthused about that or interested. So total, just with those first two items is about half a million a year, net present value. You know, at more, like I think I used four percent here, is four to five million in ten years and seven to nine million in twenty years. So you know, it almost pays for itself. But it's just a question of, is this a priority for the town? Are there other revenue streams? Do we set ourselves up as a municipal light company for purposes of owning the generation and the batteries? We can do that. And, and National Grid cannot own generation. So we could do that. So these are some of the questions. Do we set up as an enterprise fund? But I just wanted to show you that with seventy-five percent FEMA cost sharing, the project nearly pays for itself before we even start looking at, you know, asking the people who are benefiting to contribute. If that's what we want to do. So that is that, other alternatives. Here's just some comps. Interestingly enough, we are looking at the backup generators or batteries on every home as a solution. That may be something we do if we move forward with the central, the Cohasset Core Micro Mini-Grid, that might be something we do for the other parts of town. Battery costs are going down, and there might be some structure that the town could take advantage of with respect to a thirty percent subsidy coming from the federal government, tax credit coming from the federal government, plus twenty-five percent of the cost going down. You know, you start to now start getting closer on backup batteries in the home, start to look closer to the total cost of what the downtown mini-grid would look like for the same number of residents. So we're looking at that. And then, of course, we're going to really emphasize the vegetation management. It's not exciting. It's just a necessity, and I hope everybody saw that. And obviously, wet ground, big trees, big problem with big wind, but we can do a lot better. I, again, Pond Street, Sawyer Street, when you drive down, take a look at what's happening with the trees and those lines, and it's happening all over town. It's just, it has gotten out of control and National Grid. I, I've tested them on that, and they said that's way outside our budget for tree management. I don't know what to say. So I don't know whose responsibility is, but we've got to figure that out and and help. So next steps, here we are. So we just presented the proposed approach, up to you on how you want to give us feedback. How, when you want us to come to you again, whether you need to do an official go, no go, and then whether or not Mima even wants us, right? If Mima says too complicated, too hard to deal with, that's going into our too hard to deal with pile, but thanks for playing. Then there's no need for decision on your part. But if they're enthused about it and want to submit it, then we just need you guys to commit. We don't have to have the twenty-five percent share identified until the time of the award. And so that would be obviously another factor to take into account.
Okay.
So, there we go.
That was a very, one of your best slide decks yet, I gotta say. You had some really cool visuals. You get, you get an A for that slide deck. I'm going to ask just one, my, my broader question, and then Cory and Jean, I saw both saw hands. I know that there's a meeting tomorrow night about, or no, Thursday night about municipalization and that option. Can we be pursuing that while still pursuing this? And I guess how tied up with National Grid will we be if this brick rant all does move forward? Then if we do and also end up wanting to own our own municipal power company, like, is it possible to do those both without hurting one or the other?
Yeah, and I, I think, so we'll learn more on Thursday. Right? We'll learn more on Thursday. But I think we need to think about municipalization in, in, as a multi, as, as a spectrum. Right? There, there's the municipalization like Kingham and Hall, where they own their own distribution lines and some batteries and like in the case of Hall, the wind turbine, right? That's Kingham and Hall. They own the whole kit and caboodle, but they buy most of their power from DICE of New England market. Because it tends to be cheaper. So when a line goes down between them and the transmission system, they're out, like we're out. Okay, so there's that model. There's a model we could do tomorrow, which is just set up a municipal light company. Yeah, it's nothing. It's sort of like a shell corporation. We could set that up tomorrow. So we could say, what, I mean, this will be, and then there's the one in the middle, which owns the generation. And in the case of mini-grid, if we move forward, it would also own, it turns out, and I was very surprised National Grid seemed to imply this, we would own those upgrades on their system, because we're paying for it, right? So that's interesting. So we might want to think about creating a municipal light company to own the generation. If we want to go forward with owning generation and batteries and backup generation, we obviously have. It doesn't mean anything if we own the generation, though, if we don't have a system to, like, our, our solar energy array on the landfill shuts off when there's an outage. Just shuts off. So if we don't have a way of getting it to load, it doesn't help us for the physical piece. So
Okay, that's a good answer.
Yeah, but, but I also want to say legally, National Grid cannot own generation. They cannot. So there's no competition there. But I also need to say that legally, if we want to buy the wires from National Grid, we can, but it has to be a negotiated price. And there is precedent that basically says the highest that they can charge us in our negotiated price is the replacement cost of the wires. And so guess what price they're going to charge us?
Yeah, that's really high, okay.
And it's crappy, it's a crappy asset. And then we'd have to upgrade it and, you know, more or less do what we're like, looking to do now without the seventy-five percent subsidy. This could be a baby step, or it might be that we start getting, you know, better power supplies so that we don't need to make the investment.
Okay, good answer. Cory?
Tanya, thanks for the time and the presentation. I think my question would be for Chris. So I know town staff has got tons of free time. You know, I'm imagining that if we wanted to do this project, it would probably be, you know, we'd set it up more of an enterprise fund like water or sewer would be, because you know, we need to, we're going to have a funding source, we should have a pretty clear pile of money that's doing all this. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but okay, you're, whatever, whatever, whatever we have to do, what kind of workload? Is this, from your perspective, simple to implement on the, on the, on the, you know, governance side of things? Or is this really kind of a spaghetti bowl where, you know, we really need to hear from you to figure out if you can do it before we can even think about the money, because it's just too, there's just so many balls in the air. Like, if, if we wanted to do it, the board said, yeah, let's do it. From your perspective, is this possible?
Well, yeah, I, I, we have great resources in town. That said, I think we have to have, we have to staff this. And, and whether that's, again, that may be outsourced staff. Bring on folks to, to provide that expertise, and Tanya does for free, but she's not going to do it for free all the time. Unless she wants to just like become the classic power grid manager.
We're making your business cards tomorrow.
We already have some assistance with the grant. We've already set some funds to help with all that. In terms of implementing something this big, yeah, we have to have, we have to have someone, or some people, or some firm working alongside us for all of this. It's just beyond, you know, we don't have this a lot lighting plant at the end of time.
And then when it comes to funding for something like this, what would be the, I mean, obviously, you know, we're looking at articles for town warrant in the spring. You know, or, you know, are we, is this something that would be, you know, a debt override type of?
I think we'd also have to get council up the table to talk about logistics. I think the timing is throughout is kind of interesting creative about it, setting up a municipal lighting plant to just own stuff that doesn't exist right now, a generation piece. I don't know if anyone's ever done that.
I like the creativity, I do.
So I think we have to get council to the table to talk about how to do it. Again, I, I think the application is, 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 as Tanya said, it's September to January. I don't think the worst till May, I think, right? Was that what they announced? There's a lot of time to think through that. So, you know, I, I, I would say that if we are selective and, you know, and we go forward, then I think we do have to stop.
And then, you know, finally, I'm just thinking about, if it's a seventy-five percent match, you know, I think, Tanya, in your chart, it was basically upgrading the wires that go to like the schools and critical infrastructure for about seven and a half million, which is about, you know, roughly moving to what our, our input is. So it's like we're upgrading the wires and we're getting a power plant and a bunch of batteries for free. Which in that perspective is kind of a cool way to.
It really makes sense financially. It does when you think about it.
Well, maybe, Jean, go ahead. Maybe National Grid is getting a wire upgrade for free.
What if we own them?
So, so sorry to stick on the trees, but I'm going back to the trees. So the last point on, I, I forget which PowerPoint slide it was. Talked about vegetation and National Grid said it would be too expensive for them to do. But it strikes me that the success of this project is predicated on those trees being maintained. So if National Grid isn't going to do it, then we have to do it. And I don't see that cost accounted for in the projected budget. And to me, that's sort of a threshold issue in terms of if it falls on us and National Grid is, again, saying it's too expensive. I, I think, I think that's a real issue that we, we need to address, having sat through advisory last year and had a lot of details about a bucket truck that we barely able to buy.
So, so let me just clarify on the trees and National Grid. They have a budget. So the town has worked with National Grid and have significantly trimmed back or culled like a hundred dead trees. So far, I think, like, within the past year, Brian Joyce has been working with National Grid to do that. So we are already engaged in vegetation management with National Grid. National Grid has a budget to do vegetation management. The upfront cost of the vegetation management for that seven five point five million, it is included in there above and beyond what's in their budget. So it's the ongoing maintenance that you're talking about, and we have not gotten a number from them on that. And how that would be, would it be socialized? Would it be passed directly to us? What happens with respect to the property taxes? Do we get to charge them more property taxes because it's a higher value system? You know, there's just those types of ongoing costs are definitely part of the conversation. part of the conversation and, and we have to finalize them. I totally agree. So when I say they're not gonna do it, they're saying they've got a budget for tree management. That's what they're sticking to. They're working with us. They've taken some aggressive approaches. But to trim back all the trees in town to have a significant impact, we've been talking to them about this for six years and we still have these outages. So I, I don't know what to do about that, except tell them almost every call we have, when they tell me, Tanya, the solution's vegetation management. I say, isn't that in your job description? And isn't that what you're supposed to be doing? Like, who's supposed to be doing that? And I think that's a very important thing that has come out of this process to understand that the vegetation management is critical to the, our power supply, but only for 70% of the outages. 30% of the outages are happening upstream from us. So we could cut down every tree in town and we'd still have four day outages.
Right.
So we're getting, we're protecting against the 30%. Um, because the other 70% is from trees that are gonna, bars are gonna come down anyway. But I, I'm still looking at, you're assuming a 7% discount rate versus the town cost of capital. I'm looking at commercial constituency retail sales is worth 2.2 million, res reduced residential reduced power outages, benefit value of $11.9 million. And then you're using a 7% discount rate versus the town cost of capital. We're getting in pretty deep into the weeds on this. And I, I just don't understand it.
Well, so I can send you, well, certainly the 52-page draft report that supports those numbers. We are using the FEMA standard numbers. So that's how FEMA analyzes it. They have a value of 274 dollar per person outage day. That you, if you can avoid a person outage day, you get the credit of $174. And then we increase that to 228 based on the GDP of Massachusetts versus the United States. So we adjust that up to 228. So these are their standard numbers that are doing the calculation for the benefits.
It's not real.
I'm sorry?
This is a estimate of a projected economic value. This, this isn't like real money that's coming back and forth.
This is, this is based on the FEMA brick grant requires you to do a benefit cost analysis.
All right.
And this is solely based on their methodology and their numbers, including their discount rate.
No, that makes sense. Jean?
So, um, well, and I should say thank you, Tanya. This is super educational and I'm trying to take it all in. One question that I think maybe is, and I'm just gonna say it, but it strikes me that what we may be doing, and we do it because we feel like we're over a barrel here, um, is paying for upgrades that National Grid or improvements that National Grid should be doing to address our Frankenstein structure they've created throughout our town. Um, and failure to maintain the vegetation properly, notwithstanding that they're a state sanctioned monopoly. Um, and so I, I, a part of my concern is that we're taking on, uh, you know, a big investment that frankly, I think National Grid should be making. Um, and I'm a little concerned about hearing about increases in property taxes or maybe enterprise funds. And I completely appreciate where you are and why you're there. But I'm just thinking about like the person sitting at home who is already paying their electric bill and now being asked to pay to essentially get to the point where they think National Grid should be already, right? Like, I shouldn't have to pay for generators. National Grid should maintain my lines and get me the power that it needs to. And so, um, that brings me to my, my, I guess, my question about municipalization and just some of my thoughts on that is that in terms of municipalization, and I'm looking forward to the, um, meeting on the 18th and learning more about that. But I, I do want to be careful that, yes, it's a replacement cost of the utility, but it's minus or less for depreciation and obsolescence. And so even if, even if, that's what the statute says, and there's a lot of case law surrounding that. Um, so even if, Tanya, we do not end up in a place where we can ultimately move forward with this, I think what you've done for the town is an incredible service because you are pricing out the obsolescence of National Grid for us in a way, in a very collaborative way with them. And so I think that is a huge advantage that you've given us. So, you know, I just want to put that out there for people, including National Grid that may be watching that. I do think that, um, this is a good project, but it's really highlighting all of the work that we think we have to take on to get ourselves up to a functioning utility. Which I think would be something we would absolutely benefit from in terms of pursuing the alternative if we go there.
And, and I could add, what we're seeing here, and, and I agree, this is great work because we're getting a clear picture. And this is classic socialization of the risks and the obsolete equipment and privatization of the profits. National Grid is perfectly willing to unload their dog, which they've milked and have not maintained. It doesn't work well. It is erratic and doesn't provide what we expect. They're perfectly willing to unload it to us because the money's been made and they'll make us pay for that. And, and I think that when you get down to looking through all of the work that you've done and looking at all of this, it becomes abundantly clear that again, it, it's a classic example of, um, monopoly, um, economic power where you socialize the risk and privatize the profit. And, and I, I have problems.
So I, I do want to say, I don't think they're, they would just hand over the keys to the kingdom if we're willing to pay the replacement costs.
Right.
Right? Because they, they give up all the future revenue. And it would be very bad for their stock price. So they would fight us tooth and nail for at least two years. But we'll learn more about that on Thursday. But I think when towns have municipalized, it has been a long process, but we'll hear about that on Thursday. So again, we've got parallel paths going. I also, we are looking at batteries because we do know that there's some money coming down the pipe um, from the infrastructure fund. And so that's an exciting opportunity and the costs are going down. And frankly, if everybody had two Tesla batteries in their house, as much as there's a limit, most of our outages would be covered.
You're right.
And it's the same cost, except for the fact we don't get 75% from the federal government.
So, and I, I agree, we have several parallel paths going. We're all excited about the meeting on Thursday. What you, what do you need from us tonight or now to keep moving forward? Plugging ahead with all this great work that has been done?
Yeah, so we don't need anything from you, nothing. Just, you know, this has been very helpful to understand your concerns. Give us some fe- feedback on where we need to go. I think, put us on the agenda for the day after, whatever the next meeting is after December 6th, that's when we're gonna, well, temporarily put us on the agenda because that's when we're gonna know, is Mima gonna, do they want to present us or not? Do we meet the 1.0 threshold or not?
All right.
And, and if we do, then I think we need to come to you and ask for a decision. Do you want to go forward with this? And, and again, there's, we're not committing to the 25%. It's just if we go forward with this, they want to know we've got that 25% before the award. So.
Okay.
That, I think, is the next step. So this is, as always, I've thrown a bunch of stuff at you and you've had great questions, but I think most people will have to digest this a little bit more. But I think we have our arms around the problem. I really do. And I think knowing what the problem is, we can now start looking at what the potential solutions are. And then can do cost benefit analysis and compare, not using FEMA's numbers, but using our numbers.
All right. Now, I agree. That's a great way to end this, Tanya. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tanya.
You are a rock star. We really appreciate all of it. And to be continued. We'll see you soon.
To be continued. All right. Thank you, everybody. And thank you for the A on the presentation. I appreciate it, Carrie.
Wait, wait, hold on. Wait, okay.
And maybe Chris, this is a.
No, you, you can go, Tanya. Jean can ask for Chris.
Chris, maybe this is a question for you. Um, on the tree mitigation issue, if there's any way to help Tanya sort of get her arms around that cost, because it strikes me, that's a threshold issue. If, yeah. If we're gonna spend all this money, which is a big if, then we've got to figure out what the if National Grid won't do it and the status quo is maintained, then we have to.
Well, that's one of the challenges that you have. We can do trades. If trees are wires, we can't because you need to be especially certified or you might launch people.
Okay.
So, so.
That is the problem. Yeah.
During storms, that's one of the big delays. We can't touch any of those trees because of the wires. It's not just, it's a safety thing. And.
But I hear you.
There are people who do that. So there are people who do that, right? And, um, we've, I guess, Tanya, well, no, we've been working with them for years. We've been to their storm center and say, hey, you know, we, we'll cooperate, you know? We had a big stretch on Pond Street with some of the neighbors like, they can't take the trees down. The harvest had found we were dying. They came down and the good news is that we took them out before they all came down and knocked the wires out. It's one of the trees that led to it. It, it's, um, the problem is that National Grid has done, I think, decades. It's not like just yesterday, right?
And they're asking us to buy the equivalent of, and you'd like this, Cory, a, a GM auto plant in 1977 that's making Elv- Elvirons.
Well, look, Mazda's done that and Rivian did that with success. I'm just saying the analogy.
What a car analogy.
Do you want to speak Rivian?
Chris is right, though. This is decades.
With, with the same equipment, the same V8s.
But not a, not a 10 cents of the dollars.
And I just, I don't know how other towns are dealing with this. Obviously, our town has extreme winds being on the coast, but is it, I mean, is it in writing anywhere that any, like, who's supposed to be in charge of the tree mitigation? Like, are we supposed, do we need to try to hold National Grid more accountable? Not just Tanya on alternative energy, but we as a board, I think, need to figure out how to bring them into a meeting and try to force this issue a little.
I, I, well, I, I think that more engagement is, we are engaging them all the time.
Right.
And, um, there's been a lot of tree mitigation. That said, it, it's not just the ones you see, right? They, they run through, it runs through the park, right?
Yeah.
Um, and it runs down situ and, and it runs in backyards. And some of the grid, I mean, Jean was playing with Frankenstein. It, it, it involved organically. There were, there were poles and wires and, and pilots. Nice, you can't see them, except they're accessible, but they're in the woods. So, to be continued. There's a lot, a lot to talk about. And I think we do have to find a way to get some pricing. So maybe Steve and our other friends who are, are municipal lighting plants can help.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So.
All right, moving on to town meetings.
I know, I know, we haven't even had the special yet, but we're looking at the end.
I know.
So, uh, I've, I've checked the dates. May 2nd would be the date. Again, you don't have to do it tonight. You just have to do it by the end of the year. But I brought a calendar and both confirmed, the moderator and the council are both good on May 2nd. Uh, that's, that's on Monday. If you set the May 2nd date, and then I would recommend you set maybe 14th of the annual town election. That's, that's a historic pattern.
It doesn't have to be two weeks afterwards.
Yeah, usually try, that's effectively that. You, you, the, the meeting would be on Monday and the election's the second Saturday. Um, that's the pattern that's been used in the past a lot, not all of them, a lot. And, um, the, the, the challenge with the week before is that because Patriots are so late this year, people are all at that school vacation week. People are coming back on that Monday and that kind of thing, the first night would be, I think, a challenge.
That'd be bad.
So the second would be the first time. And we've talked about Saturdays before, but I think it's kind of mixed Saturdays. So this would continue on a Monday. And you can set a time later. Usually we do it the 7th, if it starts early.
Okay.
Uh, again, so you, you don't, you could do it time if you want. If you wanted, just think about it for another two weeks, you can do that too. But again, I have confirmed the moderator of the town council available. So you don't have to rely on, well, most certainly the town attorney.
Any thoughts on these dates or other preferences or how we feel?
I like moving in back in the spring. I like being kind of back on schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, I should be back in spring.
I mean, I, these make sense to me, so.
I'm totally fine with them and I'm ready to vote if the rest of the board is.
Yeah, my only question is Monday night versus Saturday, um, for town meeting. I know we've gone back and forth on that. You know, Monday, school nights can be tricky. You know, they don't lead to a completely inclusive approach there. Like, if you have an infant, you're not gonna like put your infant in a rec center until.
Yeah, no, and I know, we also have people that don't want Saturdays. There isn't a perfect time to do it, but I see what you mean. I, I see what you mean.
I just wanted to flag that as long as we're just.
Yeah, but then what happens on Saturday is a lot of people, they end up going to the soccer fields in the morning and they never show up. So, you know, and, and.
That was one of the benefits of the private movie is that you could have, I have my, my one-year-old and my two-year-old in, in the car with them. It's great.
I mean, the driving is fun. It's, it's, you know, we, we couldn't want to, if we want to continue it.
I really used to like that.
It was, it was expensive, but, and it was because of COVID, but people did love the concept.
It also didn't encourage discussion.
Not the best way to describe it, Carrie.
It was fun.
It was a time and a place.
I mean, I don't feel strongly in just flagging it.
Yeah, it's a big point.
I don't feel strongly where the other, I, I would tilt towards, um, what gets the biggest turnout. And the kids go both ways. People going out of town, weekends go both ways. You know, early, that time in spring, everybody's out doing yard work. Are they gonna, I just don't.
It's hard. You put a debt override, people show up.
That's true.
Do we want to entertain a motion to approve these two dates?
So move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of town meeting May 2nd and annual town election for May 14th, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, they're set, Chris.
Okay, awesome. We're a little ahead of the game.
Ahead of schedule.
No, not ahead of schedule tonight, but ahead of schedule.
All right, so one, just only one quick update tonight. So just a reminder that we're doing the ribbon cutting of the Rec Youth Center, uh, Thursday at 4:00. If you can come, just, just let Justin know. And, um, the, the, the reports I've got, I think I sent some pictures in the last update this week. Um, I think Jan has personally experienced with her dog. Um, it, it's been very popular. In fact, apparently they've been doing these pickup ping pong tournaments. There's enough kids. Uh, so, uh, and, and the kids have really been engaged. And apparently we became a very hot spot for sixth and seventh graders, which is really, I think.
This one's just one.
And, uh, and the fifth graders are eager because they can't come. So they're all, so that kind of anticipation is exciting.
Yeah.
It's a big fifth grade class too. As anyone with a vision, Sarah White, always.
Yeah.
There's a lot of fifth graders, so, uh, so, 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 so more.
Great, okay.
You'll send the board and committee stuff next week. Do you want to just remind us of that?
Oh, yeah, the Monday and Tuesday events.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, Monday will be, that's a very good reminder. On Monday, the 22nd. Us in this very room will be our first annual board and committee thank you event. Some desserts, some thank yous, some coffee.
Okay.
Um, and, and we've gotten, I think, we, we have several dozen, uh, response. Yeah, so, um, should be, should be a nice, should be a nice event. So, uh, I'm, I'm, anyone who's on a board and committee or elected or appointed is encouraged. And that's the next one. Thanks, Mike. And then Tuesday is our back in person uh, annual service recognition of employees. And again, I encourage all of you to come if it's not at all possible. And that will also be in this room. And, um, we're recognizing, I think, 23 employees.
Right.
That's four retirees and eight, and 19 or 18 um, servicing. So we recognize people who sign ten years and we go off. So the four folks that retire, we'll be doing a year. And we like to have a whole board, you know, get pictures and check-ins and, uh, it's, it's gotta be nice to do it back in person. We always have a nice turn. So that's at 6 o'clock. The board recognition event, I believe, is at 7. A lot of people are going, so. So I said, next week, 7:00.
Should we let Justin know? Are, are you handling the Tuesday event too for us? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. All right, select for comments. We can go down the line. Jack, you want to get us started tonight?
Um, yeah, uh, I'd like to congratulate the board. I thought this is a very productive, um, collaborative meeting of the executive of the town, discussing some pretty good issues with different viewpoints. And I think we made a lot of progress. So I think congratulations.
Okay.
And I think at least on one night, if we look at our. constituents out there, the ones who are still bothering, we've earned our keep tonight. Congratulations.
Alright, thanks, Jack.
Um, I too would echo Jack's sentiments in terms of thanking ourselves. Uh, no, I'm just kidding. I, no, I, I think, I think we made some really good progress on some like really big epic, potentially generational issues that we're trying hard to work through. And there's a lot, and it's coming from all different angles, whether it's facilities or communications or our utility infrastructure. Um, just to throw one more into the mix, um, I did happen upon, um, some of our fellow colleagues from Situette who would like to sort of reengage on the regional sewer question, I think, because they're starting to feel the need to make some decisions. So, you know.
Yeah.
Notwithstanding the progress tonight, I think, I think, I think that, that there's some, um, you know, I don't want to say pressure, but I think we do have to maybe next start to approach the regional sewer issue with the same sort of attention we've been giving to some of these other issues that are boiling out there. Perhaps sooner rather than later, in fairness to some of the other towns, maybe waiting to see what we do or don't do. And so I just put that out there for our consideration for future agenda items. So at least we can be responsive to our neighbors. If, you know, we're not gonna move forward, then they can figure out ways around. Or if we want to move forward, then we do so.
Well said. Alright, two things I just wanted to thank everyone for. First of all, Veterans Day was fantastic on Thursday. Thank you to the Legion and everyone who helped organize it. Thank you to our wonderful essay readers. Our students were wonderful and it was just a really nice turnout that we saw in town. The weather was beautiful and it was a really great experience and I know a lot of our veterans appreciated it. We also, last week on Sunday, had a wonderful time with the Irish ambassador, Dan Mulhall. And I wanted to thank Cory and Jean for coming to dinner with us. He absolutely loved seeing Cohasset. We got to take him to Central Cemetery to see the Celtic Cross there and to the Maritime Museum to see some artifacts from the old Briggs St. John shipwreck. And it was a really moving experience. And as we work on the Irish Heritage Trail with the rest of the South Shore, I do feel like the ambassador and his delegation want to come back to Cohasset. So we made a very good impression as a town and I'm really proud of us for that. Cory?
Okay, I'll wrap it up. Something that just came across the transom. It's not really our lane, but it does concern me a little bit. Um, there's, uh, on the school side, there's been at least, I've heard a little bit of initial discussion about outsourcing school bus drivers. Um, and, you know, these are people that they drive their kids around. And I just, I, I think these are, this is a position, and I know that there's, there's challenges with pay, there's challenges with hiring. But, you know, when it comes to, we're talking about outsourcing or not outsourcing, that, and again, it's not our call. It's, it's school board, but, but if there is some discussion, I want to express my support for trying to, whenever we can, keep town employees driving our, our, our children around, because I think that's just, that's how it should be done. Um, and I just wanted to bring that up kind of publicly and use, use my, my seat here to kind of just, you know, just, just make a point.
Okay. Alright, on that note.
Motion to adjourn.
We don't have any topics not recently anticipated, so Jack, I will entertain your motion to adjourn.
Now Cory and I have been fighting over this. I think Jean needs to make the motion.
Alright, motion to adjourn.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, opposed. It's unanimous. It's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
I will say the amendment to the motion.